Recording in progress.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for March 9th. Please join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have citizen input now, and I believe there's one person in the room that would like to speak, Alice Elssof. You can come up and speak, and you do have three minutes. So thank you for joining us today. She is going to address Worrel Park, and we do have 18 emails from the community opposing turning Worrel Park into a parking lot.
Alice Elssof, I've lived in Bend since 1961. I'm here today to say that destroying Worrel Park is a terrible idea in many ways. One, it is the last natural feature in our wonderful downtown walking area. Other large urban cities cherish their natural areas. I doubt that New York would trade its Central Park or Portland its Mount Tabor for a few parking spaces. As it stands right now, with its native vegetation, old growth trees, and the many critters that live there, Worrel is a priceless resource for the school district to use for field trips now that we no longer have money for away trips as we once did. Two, there was no attempt to advise the public that the leveling and hauling off of this park was even in the offing. Public input has only been received by you informally through emails and phone calls to county staff. Unless you attended the 12422 B O C C meeting, apparently no one but the commission saw the artist rendition of what the re-engineered space would look like. When we want to walk around on pavement in an engineered space, we have the old mill for that. What we lack is any natural area within the city. Apparently, on viewing this artist rendition, the commission voted two to one to go ahead with no public input. Three, the decision seems to have been made with a strange lack of hard data as to the actual need for public parking. What with more folks working from home and the really good idea you had of doing some county business in Redmond, having a satellite site at the fairgrounds saves folks there a lot of driving on crowded Highway 97. There are too many unanswered questions, no hard data or long-term visioning, or working in conjunction with the city on the future parking needs. Confusing to many is the odd comparison between the two recent options, leveling Worrel or a parking structure on the corner of Harriman and Kearney. Another option was considered a year ago for parking structure on the huge north parking lot, but dropped because it seemed too expensive at $18 million for 550 parking places. But look, Worrel is 2.5 to 2.8 for 68 million spaces, and Harriman is 7 to 7.5 million for 248 spaces. Please note that these options are not true comparisons. A parking structure on the large north parking lot seems more sensible, definitely competitive, and no destruction needed. It needs to be reconsidered using true comparison criteria. Granted, Worrel could use a little TLC, since being designated as a county park, not a parking lot, by your predecessors, the commissioners of 1997. There are those who would think it a privilege to volunteer to level up the picnic tables, reattach the signs that the county has left untended, improve the trails, and establish an ADA trail. Please do not proceed with this plan without collaborating with the city on the actual future parking needs and recognizing the importance that this natural area provides to our historic walkable downtown. Thank you very much.
Alice, thank you so much for coming in today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We also received into citizen input five emails opposing the Simpson Avenue RFP. And we have one email, and I know I saw maybe one or two, maybe they were just coming to the commissioners individually regarding Thornburg. So there is one email into citizen input. So thank you for that one, too. Do we see any other people with the raised hand on Zoom? No, no raised hands. Okay, thank you, Stephanie. Okay, we do have our consent agenda today?
Move approval of the consent agenda?
And I will second it three sets of minutes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Thank you, Sharon. Now we have item number four. Which I believe maybe Betsy or Barrett pushed. Oh, Janice, are you going to do this one?
Yes, ma'am. Janice Garso, Director of Deschutes County Behavioral Health. For the record, I am doing this one because sadly Barrett is on the home stretch counting down to his final day as a full-time employee with Deschutes County Behavioral Health, which is Friday. So he asked me to cover this for him, and I'm happy to do so. I am here in connection with consideration of resolution number 2022-015, which was a request to convert a limited-duration peer support specialist that serves our veteran community to a regular position from a limited-duration position. And typically, I think these resolutions are brought to the board by county finance staff, which is why Dan has joined us. But I was asked to come back and have a follow-up discussion about this particular position. So I am here at your invitation and happy to respond to any questions.
So starting off the conversation, so converting from that temporary position to the FTE regular position means that we plan on having this position long-term. You know, it looks like, you know, we're, it's turned out to be a real good outreach connection opportunity, professional staff, you know, FTE position. I guess, you know, one of my thoughts when we were talking about this is, you know, how many of these peer support specialists, you know, kind of through the organization, this is one for veterans. Any thoughts?
Yes, I believe we have 24 peer support specialists. We don't have 24 on staff because we have a couple of vacancies, but we have 24 peer support specialist FTE out of roughly 240 staff in behavioral health.
And are those mostly limited duration or FTE? You know, that's kind of what I was trying to get at when we were talking about it before, just understanding the scope of this, you know, classification across our services.
They are mostly not limited duration. They are mostly regular positions on various teams. At this point, I think every team has one or more peer support specialist as part of their multidisciplinary team managing cases.
Yeah, and I came in a couple of years ago and spent an afternoon with a peer support specialist. In fact, we went over to the facility and met some people. So I mean, I've met them and see the great work they do also. So as I say, this was just understanding the scope of this effort and longevity of these. It looks like it's going to be, you know, part of the outreach and connectivity opportunities for all of our services for a long time to come.
Correct.
Janice?
On the wording on this document, it does say the Veterans Pilot Project, but it's really not a flying project, right? It's a project that's a pilot, right?
Yeah.
I just thought it was interesting how that was worded. I'm thinking like, well, are they going to think that you have to be in the Air Force, and then you could be part of this?
It is not a pilot as in flying a plane. It was a pilot project of the Oregon Health Authority several years ago when the funding was first launched, and the vision for these peer support specialists who do outreach and engagement with veterans who are sometimes difficult to engage in our services, so.
I know. It was really incredible, wasn't it, that we already had one person transitioned from the Veterans Village? Because I just, you know, it's only been a couple of months. So that was, that was nice news. I know that Dave's doing a wonderful job because he is a veteran. So, you know, serving for 20 years makes a difference. Mr. Chang?
Janice, can you discuss the long-term funding sustainability for this position?
Yes, so this position will become, as a regular position, part of our overall behavioral health budget. And that budget currently is supported by our contract with the Coordinated Care Organization Pacific Source for Medicaid dollars. It is supported by our status as a certified community behavioral health clinic, which allows us to participate in the enhanced Medicaid rate. It is supported by our county general fund, which is already in our budget and is sort of distributed across programs based on where there are gaps, needs, and obviously supported by the capacity to bill Medicaid for these services.
And so that is, those are the ways that we are currently paying for this position, and you do not anticipate any of those declining or going away in the next couple of years? So this position would have a variety of fund sources to potentially draw from as needed?
So Commissioner, this position is currently supported by the grant funds through OHA, and those last until next December, not this coming December, but December 2023. And will cover the position mostly through fiscal year '23 and a portion of fiscal year '24. And then we will cover it with additional revenue that we do not anticipate going away to the extent of our ability to predict into the next biennium. As I've shared with you before, there's been robust support for CCBHCs. It's even possible that this grant stream will continue to be funded through the OHA. We just never know that typically until closer to the toll date of the grant. And we don't anticipate having any difficulty funding this position. These are, this is not a psychiatrist. This is a peer support specialist role, and they typically are roles we can maintain even in tight years.
Thank you. Yeah, and the OHA funding for, you know, for multiple year or over multiple fiscal years is great, and it is also something that, you know, we as, we as a county can advocate for with the legislature to continue.
Indeed.
So what does the on-ramp look like for a peer support specialist? You know, how does somebody apply or become, you know, find out about this position, I guess is my thought?
Well, there are the traditional ways, you know, we post these positions on NeoGov on our portal, the way that we generally do. But often, these positions are also word-of-mouth. So our peer support specialists who are serving the community are really linked to the recovery community in a pretty profound way. That's part of what makes them so valuable is their lived life experience in the recovery community means that they can offer our clients hope, and they also have connections in that community. So this particular peer support specialist, Jeremiah, came to us through his connection with John Parsons, JP, who just left us sadly to join Veterans, not Veterans Village, Veterans Ranch. And he was initially hired as a peer, did lots and lots of outreach and engagement work in the community, worked with some of the veterans in the community who then became aware of this particular position. So word-of-mouth is another way that we are able to hire peer support specialists that's really valuable to us.
Is there a career path, you know, more qualifications in the behavioral health world for the folks like this, too?
Absolutely. We have had many of our peer support specialists, while they're working with us, get trained as certified alcohol and drug counselors through the associates program, which we can now support through our CADC stipend package. We have had some who are involved in getting educated at a bachelor's level or even a master's level. So we've had peers transition into opportunities to apply for case management positions. And we may, I think we have one person now in a, in a behavioral health specialist two role who started with us as a peer. I'm not certain of that, but I think so. So yes, there is a career path, and we've worked really hard to expand on those through some of our incentives and stipends.
Great. Excellent. Well, yeah, as I say, I was looking for a little bit more information. Great conversation, kind of understanding the, you know, the position, the services provided, and then also, as I say, the career path, or, you know, is, are these positions filled kind of long-term, or is it a natural opportunity to kind of rotate in and rotate out? I guess that's another thought, you know?
It's probably a little bit of both. So we have peers that have been with our organization since we started using peer support specialists to do this work. We have peers who fairly quickly moved through the organization into a higher level of responsibility or a higher classification. And, you know, the nature of this particular role is that these are often folks who have struggled with mental illness and addiction, and on occasion may experience relapse and take some time outside of work to engage in recovery and sometimes return to us to work again. So any one of those is a possibility, but most of our peers stay with us, especially as we've made real efforts to adjust the classifications so that they're reimbursed at a level that's really commensurate with the value of the work they bring to serving this really tough population.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of resolution number 2022-015 to convert a limited-duration 1.0 FTE peer support specialist to 1.0 regular FTE position.
And I will second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you so much, Janice, for all that information. I think it's really important that we let the community know.
And?
Thank you, commissioners.
Did you say 24?
And on behalf of our wonderful Jeremiah, who will be thrilled, a special thanks. So appreciate it.
And you did say we have, like, approximately 24?
Peer support specialist.
I will, I'll go look at position control right now and send you the numbers.
Okay, lovely. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Great, great that we're going to be able to do one more thing to retain what sounds like an excellent employee.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Janice. Item number five, Peter and Will.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the commission, for the record, Peter Gatawski, Community Development Director, joined with Will Groves, who's our planning manager. Community Development Department is respectfully asking the Board of County Commissioners to authorize us to recruit for a second administrative assistant to help us in the planning division. As noted, staff prepared a memorandum, and on page three, there are some bulleted points that I just want to highlight, some of the challenges that we're experiencing within the planning division. We have one administrative assistant right now that serves both long-range and current planning. We have had significant turnover over the last several months, and that turnover, coupled with our voluminous land use applications, many of which are going to public hearing and getting appealed to the Board of County Commissioners and ultimately to the Land Use Board of Appeals, is contributing to significant overtime for our administrative assistant that serves the management team. And that's, that's not sustainable for that individual. The staff turnover that we've talked about periodically has created a team, it's a vibrant team. I'm very proud of the new members that have been brought on board. But it's important to acknowledge that the average age in the planning division has gotten much younger. We have several emerging planners that are at the cusp of their career and really embracing this opportunity to develop their skills as planners. And it's creating some inefficiencies for us. And a second administrative assistant can help with managing records, especially those that are controversial, assist in what are becoming voluminous when we do get legal challenges at the local level. We have opponents that are quite dedicated and very opinionated and provide, I dare say, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of materials, some of which the board has seen when they've received the consideration of appeal. And so it's a lot to manage. The other point that I think, for your consideration to bring on a second administrative assistant, is this person can also, we could use them to rotate to help with code compliance in other, really, it's another backup. It gives us more bandwidth as our department is seeing a tremendous amount of applications across divisions. And so we have the budget to support it. It would, again, I think it would give us needed support for a team that is emerging and getting more experience by the day. And it recognizes just some of the turnover that we've experienced over the last six to 12 months, just as we fill positions with employees that many don't have a lot of experience in Deschutes County or have been promoted and are learning the new responsibilities as quickly as possible. So happy to, Will and I can answer any questions you have. Sherry Pinner, our management analyst, is also in attendance if you have questions about the budget. But something that we think can help our overall operations. So thank you for the consideration this morning.
Thank you, Peter, and thank you, Will, as being our planning manager. Are there any questions?
Just an observation, you know, building out the capacity, making sure it's flowing well, customer service, turnaround times, the whole thing. We pride ourselves on that. So I'm real supportive of this position, knowing that, yeah, keeping the hundreds and hundreds of pages of testimony organized in the right order, scanned at the right time, is really going to be important. It sounds like, I think I read in here, that could be some initial just response to people's applications, too, just receiving applications also.
Correct.
Great.
Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, with the explosive growth in applications, the complex, the complexity of appeals and other processes, I definitely appreciate the need for this additional position.
And, yes, we've been watching closely your unfilled FTE, and I truly, and I know your, your team is very busy. So whatever we can do to help you, not get totally bogged down in that, you know, the FTE that we're missing, but actually add someone that can help on a day-to-day basis, I think is really important. So, yeah, we need to be successful.
So is this for action today, or is there going to be a?
Yes, Commissioner DeBonne, if you're comfortable today, your authorization to allow us to recruit immediately for this position would be greatly appreciated. But certainly, if you have, we want to defer to your comfort level.
Oh, no, I'll move approval of the addition of the one new administrative assistant position for Community Development Department.
I'll second. I just, I do want to ask, do we need some kind of a budget document or?
It'll come back as part of a resolution.
Okay.
The finance will put together.
Got it. So we'll, we'll see a resolution on the consent agenda.
Two will be that, yeah.
Perfect. We are duly taking note, and we will, we will prepare that accordingly.
Process.
Thank you.
Okay, that's pretty fast.
That's fast for us. We're, we will, we will execute that as quickly as possible. Thank you.
And you can, I think you can safely start to prepare the position, position announcement and all that stuff at the same time.
Thank you, commissioners. This is really appreciated. My staff's going to be very relieved with this support, and it's a big deal. Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you, Will, for being there. Haven't thanked you lately, but, you know, I thank Peter all the time. So truly, thank you for being there. I know you have great history of Deschutes County, and we appreciate that knowledge. Commissioner DeBonne?
Voting yes.
Mr. Chang?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. All right, so the gender conference is Thursday, so we'll have it on there.
Next week. There you go.
All right. I do believe we have a legislative update.
Thank you, Chair Dare. For the record, Whitney Hale, Deputy County Administrator. I think we're running a few minutes ahead of schedule, and Phil Scherz has not quite joined us on Zoom, but I will send him a note now, and he should be hopping on shortly.
That's never a good sign when we're ready to head, right? Because something, I mean, we try really hard to be like, okay.
Well, for the community development position, you know, that is funded by those applications and is a function of customer need at this point in time, knowing that each one that comes in provides revenue for those positions. So it's a pretty easy decision to make there, knowing that there is just an expectation in the development community for that response.
Maybe, maybe while we've got a couple of minutes, I could ask about what, what our legislative work looks like between now and the next long session? What's happening on our end?
That's a good question, commissioners.
While I try to logistic.
Sure. Well, I mean, one question, I'm just gonna, I'll just put it out there, is we have been extending our contract for our lobbyists. And so one question we're going to just need to touch base with the commissioners on is do we want to establish a new contract with our, with our lobbyists? Do we want to issue an RFP and consider proposals for that process? So that's one major issue that we are going to need to tackle. And based on that decision, it's great that we coordinate with our lobbyists on what all of the priorities are for the next session, because many agencies are required, most agencies are required to submit their proposals by September. So another thing that's very helpful for us to do is to begin to track what are the legislative work groups that are either created from this session or prior sessions that are meeting that we need to be actively engaged in. And that's something that we can coordinate with AOC so that we can identify what those, what those committees and task forces are, so that we're providing meaningful input into the legislative concepts for the next full session.
Yeah, many of the legislative concepts that are going to have momentum in, in early 2023 are being formulated right now. I attended an AOC, an AOC County Solutions Advisory Committee meeting yesterday for a little bit, and there was all sorts of brainstorming about a, a Veterans Permanent Supportive Housing concept, where basically, you know, counties, a number of different counties would be able to, you know, tap into a new, a new kind of sub-program at OHCS, which, you know, kind of within their permanent supportive housing program, you know, current offerings, there would be, you know, kind of like an allocation or a set aside for Veterans Permanent Supportive Housing projects. And, yeah, I was, yeah, sort of like a Veterans Village, but not for transitional purposes, for long-term purposes for people with, you know, chronic, chronic illness, chronic disabilities. for long-term purposes for people with, you know, chronic illness, chronic disabilities, who need a place to live for the rest of their life. So, you know, and sorry, I've gotten in the weeds on that, but just to say that there are all these legislative concepts that, you know, the ones that are actually going to have traction in 2023 are the ones that are being formulated right now. And I hope that we can be engaged with those processes in a kind of strategic and systematic way, instead of just kind of hoping that that stuff shows up in, you know, in the list of bills in January that we're excited about.
So let's start by beginning to coordinate with AOC, and I don't know if Laura's the right person to do that, but we'll coordinate to make sure that we're beginning to attract those concepts now, and then also work with the Commissioners on what your priorities are for the next legislative session, because now is exactly the time we need to begin to think about the next session.
Great. And I see Phil has joined us. So Phil, what happened to the gas station bill?
Yeah, good question.
Because that is relevant in Deschutes County. And I knew the rest of East Oregon already, there are gas stations, you can pump your own gas easily, and you're not fined $500 a day.
Yeah, and I think you're referencing House Bill 4151, which, and that did end up going to Ways and Means, but ended up dying in Ways and Means. So it did not pass this session.
It died? Oh, my God.
It died.
Okay. Because, you know, you see, whatever, gas is like $5 a gallon at places, and I know people, there are some stations that actually haven't been having anyone pumping in Deschutes County, which is truly, if they get turned down, it's a serious fine.
But I think there was something about state fire marshal, or somebody wanted to do analysis on it, and then they needed funding for it, and then it just didn't happen.
Well, yeah, definitely, it made its way to Ways and Means, and so that would make sense, but it just died in Ways and Means.
And we spent $5.8 billion, and we couldn't help out gas stations that don't have enough employees?
I have.
No comment?
That is a valid point. Sorry.
Five point eight billion.
I answered that one, but I have heard that on a lot of bills that did not make it across the finish line. So, and I also do have Ryan, I think he's being caught up, he might need to be added as a panelist as well, sorry about that. But he said he can see everybody, but he just can't see himself, so I'm assuming that means he needs to be added.
That'd be Ryan.
But where would you, where would you like us to start today, Commissioners? We, I have the bill list in front of us, the final bill list. I also have the overview of investments that were directly allocated to the Deschutes County or Deschutes County region. And then also kind of, I penciled out and found some other appropriations that will be going to state agencies that will trickle down to counties as well, that I just want to make sure you are aware of. So where would you like us to start? And we also can start with just a political landscape as well.
So, you know, the conversation that started right before you joined was, you know, understanding the big picture for next year and what could be done between now and then. So that was just, we kind of thought about, you know, making sure we're involved with AOC and hearing about some of the big things. So that's the future. That's what we started talking about five minutes before you joined us. And we're, you know, real close to that session from last Friday still. So at this point, it's still just kind of digesting what happened. So I, you know, I'm thinking, just letting you know that I'd just like to hear the big picture about what we're seeing here, what we're still digesting, because I'm sure there'll be stuff to study for a while here about what really came out. So I'm pretty flexible about whatever you have for us.
No problem. How about we start our view on big picture moving forward, how an interim looks on schedule with legislative days? I have that brought up, but I might let Ryan kind of just give an overview of, this is going to be a unique interim. There are a lot of turnover already acknowledged, and people are filing, yesterday was the filing deadline, and Ryan can kind of talk about how that affects that process, getting bills ready for the next full session, and so that might be a good starting point.
Good.
All right, I'll be pretty brief. You know, we know that session, they did the big sprint through the finish line. This was a real test for new leaders. I mean, we had new leaders all over the entire building, from the Senate Republican Leader to the House Republican Leader to the Speaker and House Majority Leader. It was new leadership everywhere, and so it was a real test. Not only had those people never been in those positions before, they had never worked together, and so it was really up in the air as to how the collaborative, or how collaborative that process was going to be. And I think what we were really happily surprised was to see that they, there was a lot of collaboration, actually, especially towards the end. I mean, there was some partisan wrangling, like there always is, but this was a group of people that wanted to get things done, get it done during the normal sort of business hours of the work week, during normal, you know, kind of close to eight to five as they could do. And they got done ahead of schedule before the, a few days before the constitutional deadline, and we haven't seen that kind of collaboration and partnership in a number of sessions. And so that was really, really a positive thing that we thought. And yesterday was the candidate filing deadline. You have three districts in the House there, and you have a couple competitive races. One that I think is kind of interesting, when you look at the redistricting, is you actually have Werner Reschke now as a, you know, someone who represents the Bend area as an incumbent. He's about as far south as South gets, he's about basically at the California border, but the way that they drew that district is goes up 168 miles and has an opponent from Bend now that files. I just think that that's interesting, the way to look at the redistricting, and that you have communities of interest, as they define, you know, two and a half hours away from each other. But, you know, looking through.
For that district, I haven't looked at the line, but I think it's just south of Sun River. I don't know that it goes north of.
It wraps around the east side of Bend.
Oh, okay, the east side of Bend. So, yeah, and I just happen to live in that district in the south edge, that's why. I haven't looked at the, oh, it wraps.
Yeah, I don't know exactly where the line is. I don't think there's any of the city in the district, but it wraps around the east side of, it may even go all the way out to Alfa.
Because that was, yeah, that was District 55 from Primeville, from Creek County, and then now it's switched, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to look at those maps at some point, yep.
Yeah, it's very interesting. But, yeah, and then they just did come out with the committee schedule for the interim, and, you know, that's really how we have annual sessions and getting sort of acclimated to that, you know, we're well-acclimated to it, is we use that interim committee process to sort of plant the flag and raise awareness and educate around the issues that we see coming down the pike for the '23 session. And so we should be having a conversation ongoing throughout the interim as to how we might be able to get informational hearings and things to help elevate your issues in advance, so that we can hit the ground running in 2023. Is that generally the broadness you want me to cover, Phil?
Yeah, absolutely. And to your point, Commissioner Chang, when I jumped on, you were right. As Ryan noted, you have to get that as part of those informational hearings, and if you really want your bill heard day one of session, you need to have that draft. I think the deadline is, well, the, yeah, deadline to get that into Legislative Council so that your bill's heard first day of next session is September 23rd. So that comes up really quick. Doesn't mean you can't drop bills after that, but as Ryan noted, if you want a part of a legislative hearing, things like that, like in December's legislative days, you better get the ball rolling now. So, yeah. Any questions on the big picture there, or? All right. Well, then, I'm going to dive in a little bit with just an overview of just the investments that we know in Deschutes County. We covered some of this last week, our last meeting, but I just wanted to note it a little bit more since we've had time to dive into it. So the session, in the Budget Reconciliation Bill, they were able to appropriate the remaining ARPA funds that the state had received. There was about $338 million of those. A lot of it went to state agencies for backfilling of budget, a lot of it to OHA, others, to just other agencies, as they were able to true-up losses during COVID or bringing on additional staff, like in the Employment Department, things like that. But you also saw some budget adjustments with ARPA funds. Some of that we will see, as I talk about other investments or other appropriations that will be seen in Deschutes County. But that was a big portion of what the Budget Reconciliation was. Now, the other thing, as noted, Commissioner Derr, is that there was a lot of new general fund allocations this session. They tapped out a lot more than they did bonding, only because they left the bonding more for those long-term housing investment packages. But the general fund was a lot of one-time expenditures. Some of it was ongoing programs, but a lot of it for one-time expenditures or appropriations into communities. They had about $900 million of new resources to roll up in this new budget. And so part of that was, as you know, $1.5 million went to the city of Bend. That was part of the $400 million housing package. That was for, it's going to be used for supporting temporary emergency shelters, sanctioned campsites, safe parking sites, and navigation centers. There are stipulations on how those dollars can be used, but the reason I note that is because that originated in the bill that originally had Deschutes County as the recipient, that did give to the city of Bend to specify more through the amendment process, but still serves the county as a whole, I would imagine, when you're coordinating homelessness services and making sure that individuals are taken care of. In addition to that $1.5 million, they also got, the city of Bend got $400,000 to address sanitary, sanitation and trash expenses. That is, there was a line item that specified this isn't to clear out campsites, but it is to mitigate maybe potential sanitation issues that are associated with that. So that's in addition to the $1.5 million. That reason I bring those up, while they're going to the city of Bend, I remember a couple meetings previously that, Commissioners, you had mentioned, that there just needs, we want to make sure that we know what's going on, so that there's coordination if the county's investing in some services that we're not, you know, duplicating that type of investment, but maybe the investments are changed to complement each other's individual investments. And so that's why I want to make sure you are aware of that. In addition, we talked last time just about the $9.5 million general fund appropriation to the Central Oregon Intergovernment Council for Core III Program, $3 million general fund appropriation to the healthcare hub of South Deschutes County, and $1.5 million general fund appropriation for the Deschutes County Circuit Court Renovation and Expansion Program. The reason I bring those back up is because it did, in the budget notes, reference that these are general fund appropriations. And so you should be getting outreach from DAS to start signing DAS agreements, specifically with the courthouse. And it will be interesting. With general fund, usually if it's under $3 million, the state has traditionally done direct, effectively direct deposits, right, to the recipients. But they've also been looking at the type of projects, and that might turn into more of a reimbursement process. So you expend a portion of the project, and then once a month submit to DAS or whatever the agency is controlling the DAS agreement, and they reimburse. And so that should all be outlined in the DAS agreement. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. The general fund is a little bit more flexible than if this was a bonding dollar project. So those should be moving forward. And then I mentioned that there were some other appropriations buried in the Budget Reconciliation Bill, and one of them was $1.68 million to the Cultural Trust, Arts and Cultural Trust, and that's housed under Business Oregon. And the reason I wanted to note that is because of that, $1.5 million will go to relief funding for artists throughout Oregon that were, these are ARPA dollars, so going back to how they were expending the rest of the ARPA dollars the state had. This will be ARPA dollars going out to artists and cultural programs throughout the state that were affected by COVID. But the remain $180,000 of it will be distributed to each of the county's cultural coalitions for their cultural plans for implementation. There's 36 of them. I imagine Deschutes has one, probably not maybe governed by the county, but just wanting you to know that that will be $180,000 distributed across those plans to help the implementation.
$180,000 divided equally by 36?
That is my understanding, yes. So now, there is a note in there that if the plans are not ready and they cannot meet the deadlines of the ARPA dollars, that the remaining funds will go back and be, increase the equal distributions. So counties' cultural plans just probably need to be able to have a plan that's ready to be implemented that meets the ARPA spending deadlines. So. Other funds that were allocated to the Secretary of State, and your county clerk probably knows this better than I do, but I'm just noting this, so they got $120,000 approved for New Elections Improvement Plan that the Secretary of State included, and that includes $120,000 grants for each county, along with new postal barcode scanners for a total of $1.1 million. In addition, there's going to be a remaining $470,000 of that big appropriation. So there's the big appropriation, $120,000 for county grants, and then $470,000 of the big appropriation is going to be set aside for contingency. And why I'm noting that is that as they will hold it back for contingency funds for potential emerging election needs, but anything remaining at the end of the biennium in the contingency fund will be equally distributed out to counties as well. And so that will be an equal distribution. Now, it's just a matter of, do they go through the whole contingency fund? But that is earmarked to go to the counties at the end of the biennium if it's not spent. So I wanted to make sure you are aware of that as well.
And Phil, so the $120,000 grants, those are, that'll be something that goes to our county clerk's office?
That's my understanding. $120,000 county, yeah, $120,000 grants for each county, along with new postal barcode scanners. They did have another appropriation that will stay centralized at the state, that was $370,000, for them to procure new statewide election services for public service announcements, search engine optimization, and statewide ballot tracking. And the reason they kept that at the state is they said it was just cheaper for the state to provide those services to every county than every county procure the same services for themselves. And so they got $370,000 for that. So I imagine that there's going to be services lent into the county from that, but more details to come. This is just the high-level description they put within that, and I can get you the exact language. Most of it I read, but I can get you that language and your county clerk that, as well if they do not already have it. So. All right. Well, then, I am going to switch over from the budget itself to just our bills and let you know where we landed on that.
Just acknowledging, it's real exciting that $3 million came through for Le Pine Community Clinic's capital. You know, that was something that was a direct ask to us, and we're like, well, what do we do with this? It's a big ask. And it's wonderful that they were able to be funded, and we did get an email from Charlotte DeHate yesterday, I think through our board email address, thanking us. I think she's really excited that that just got turned around so quick. So just take a moment to celebrate that one.
No, actually, we got peanuts, Phil. This is, no, $5.8 billion they're giving out, maybe $30 million. Oh, you didn't add OSU. OSU here did get $10 million. You forgot that one. But that is peanuts. When you put it over $5.8 billion, this really, it's just, you know, this cultural thing, it's all going to be fair, but none of this, this should have been more. We should have asked for $4 million for Charlotte, I mean, really.
Well, good point.
No, I'm looking at this, and I'm going, I added it up, and I put $30 million over $5.8 billion. You should see the percentage that comes out. It's pathetic. And that happens.
I would not disagree with you, Commissioner. I would just note that some of that 5-point-some-billion is strings attached funding. So that includes, the 5-point-some-billion of the Budget Reconciliation includes several hundred million from like FMAP dollars for Medicaid reimbursement that can only be spent on, oh, Oregon Health Plan, things like that. So it's a total budget rebalance that did grow by 5-point-some-billion dollars, but not all of it was allowed to just be, to be spent. A lot of those federal dollars, it's very rare you can get a federal dollar without a lot of strings attached to it. So a lot of the federal dollars were already dictated on how to be spent. And then, yeah, so I don't disagree with you, though, on some of the other appropriations there. There was, there was definitely a lot of new spending. That said, I think a lot of projects got, the goal was to spread that out as much as possible, and just looking at the several projects that were in Deschutes County, I know there were other counties that walked away with one, and some of that's just a program investment. And so I hear you loud and clear, though, Commissioner.
Well, yesterday I was working on Connect Oregon for our region. We had $13.6 million worth of asks, truly some excellent opportunities to make things better. And we only could submit four of those projects, but the total funds available was $46 million. That's all. Five regions in the state, and, yeah. So I'm like, well, that's not going to help, and, you know, I'm praying that we can get all four of those funded, because between the Erickson expansion, and, you know, thank goodness we're having a little snow today, but Erickson expansion is really important for all of Oregon, what they can do there.
No problem. And I do know that there's going to be conversations of trying to recapitalize Connect Oregon, I think in the next legislative session, with lottery funds like it used to be, because, like you had mentioned, it's a little, it's a little short. There was a push this session, I think, and Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, of trying to put $50 million into their additional lottery dollars, but that did not get across the finish line. That came out late in the proposals from. They, that came out late in the proposals from advocates and just did not get the momentum it needed to get put in that budget, so.
So it was asked for and it was short too, just like the gas stations.
Yeah, I think the, they put the, when I started seeing requests for the Connect Oregon funds, I believe we were darn near week three of session. And so by that time, a lot of the subcommittees already had heard from budget agencies, things like that. And so I'm not sure if it, if it was just, I mean, the dollars were there. But it was just a matter of timing, I think, of when agencies start having the paperwork wrapped up, so. But there might be an opportunity, the next, there is funds appropriated to the emergency board. I think the goal of pushing now was to try to have that Connect Oregon funding available for this round. But I do believe they're going to be pushing for it for at least the next round as well, so.
Okay, thank you, Phil.
Phil, just before you transition away from budget, staff was just seeking clarification if that bill has been signed by the governor, if it's still pending.
It's still pending her desk, I checked this morning. It's been signed by the Senate President, Speaker of the House on Friday, and then, or last Fri- last Friday. And then it's just sitting on her desk waiting for it to be signed. I imagine she's going to be having a signing ceremony because her workforce funding was included in there. So they might just be waiting on that. But it's well within her timeline of having, it's well within the timeline of signing the bill. She's not over by any means on that.
Thank you.
Oh, Phil, did you forget the 1 million for the navigation center?
No, that, that was the 1.5 that got switched over to the city event.
And not to Deschutes County?
Correct, correct.
I thought the bill specifically said like counties, I thought that's what the original wording of the bill was.
It was the original wording, yes. And the bill actually never passed, so the funding just got put into the budget bill. But same thing, I would say, Commissioner, and I'll note this in our bills too, that the wildlife crossing bill didn't pass, but they just took it and put it as a line item within the budget. So it's still got its funding and directed fund out instructions. But, but the bill itself didn't pass, so, so yes. But yeah, 1.5 million went to the city of Bend under the $400 million housing package, so.
That's interesting.
Yes.
We know that?
Well, we, the separate is the 1 million for the joint office, which we did receive, and then the city separately.
You did get the 1 million for the joint office.
We did get that, and then this is a separate 1.5 million for the city of Bend's navigation center.
He didn't mention that just now.
Right.
He did.
I didn't write it down.
I apologize if I missed that, so. But on the bills, I do want to note that our top priority bill that we had as a number one support bill was Senate Bill 1533, and this was the ADU technical fix. That did get across the finish line, passed, has been signed by the Speaker and President and is awaiting the governor's signature. I have to say, your staff did an amazing work on getting that moving. Everyone we checked in with said, we already have what we need. And so Peter and Nick, I think you guys were probably the leads on that, and, but it got across the finish line. As folks might remember that with the ADU bill from the last session was Senate Bill 391. And so there was a technical fix needed, and that was included in Senate Bill 1533 this session. And so that was passed and taken care of. Other bills that I'm just covering the priority ones and twos, we had that one priority one. Got that passed of the priority twos, I had 16 on our, the report I printed this morning. 11 of those passed and five failed. One of them, I was, as I just go through them really quick, let me just go through them and I'll adjust the one that I'm thinking about how to, I might punt over to Ryan because it was dealing with the reach codes, so it passed, but not anywhere in the form that the county reviewed it as. And so when we get there, I will be asking Ryan to kind of give a quick update on that. So just going in Bill Order 4061 was the bill we talked about requiring certain water suppliers to maintain records for 12 months to enforce water resource departments, law enforcement. So this goes back to folks, our bill, the bill description we talked about a couple of meetings ago, where they're trying to crack down on illegal marijuana grows or hemp grows to, that are utilizing water rights inappropriately. And so this will allocate funds to the Water Resources Department to, to start a program through administrative rules. And we talked about wanting to make sure we're tracking that during the interim, that there will be administrative rule setup that gives the department a little bit more teeth to go after those folks that are illegally using the water. And so that, that rule process will show how maybe they're going to be requesting folks keep track of those records. But that bill did pass, is awaiting the governor's signature as well. And it passed in both chambers, pretty universally supported, and so both caucuses supported that.
Could you explain that a little bit? So I'm just, I'm envisioning a 5,000 gallon water truck filling up on municipal supply and delivering to somebody. That's what we're talking about here?
That is exactly what we're, so there was no process in which the Resource Department felt like they could track those, track those type of situations if they were just ordering it. There's always been this situation of trying to monitor the surface level of water coming from rivers using illegally. But if somebody's ordering a water truck from a municipality and it's going out to site, they were having no ability to track that and figure out if it is being used illegally for these grows. And so this bill gives the department authority to create the administrative rules to track that. Part of that will be establishing a record keeping process for the entities or municipalities selling or giving the permits for those water trucks. I don't know if permits is the right terminology, but whatever the authorization process is, they're going to have to start tracking that. And so that if it is caught, if they find an illegal grow and they find that a water truck has been taken out there, they can backtrack to figure out how that occurred, so.
Just acknowledge that because, you know, water tanks are purchased in Klamath County for wells, domestic wells that are going dry. And there's probably more water deliveries happening these days, you know, non-illegal, but just domestic water needs to be delivered. So it's probably a little bit of, during a drought period, it's still going to be a growing need, and now it's going to be tracked a little more.
It is, yeah, it's going to be monitored a little bit more. So, and I think that was, that was part of the conversations, given that there are drought conditions that the water needs to be used for the appropriate purposes, so.
So, but Phil, it's not going to address like what was out in Sisters with the half hemp, half marijuana fields that were using a well? That's not addressed at all.
Illegal well, no, it won't. And, and I mean, that was, that was my concern about this is that this very well may assist with black market marijuana production interdiction efforts in other parts of the state. But I, I'm guessing that, I mean, I've never heard Detective Miller talk about somebody who was, you know, people who are doing illegal marijuana grows who were getting truck water deliveries. It's, you know, typically been, you know, stealing, basically stealing groundwater.
As I say, the scenario here is more domestic wells for domestic water.
So, so, you know, glad this bill passed, but like, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily address our unique needs here.
And we saw that little stand pipe out in Alfalfa and they were using it all summer long.
Yeah, we had 49 greenhouses in Alfalfa, Phil.
On one little domestic well that wasn't authorized for agricultural use.
They had, what did they have, like little pools, swimming pools, holding water everywhere?
I know that there was a conversation about the well portion of the bill. There was, both sides felt like just rushing it in a short session would have unattended consequences, specifically as it, it became more of a water rights discussion. So that did get dropped. But my understanding is there might be a work group being pulled together to address that for maybe a bill in the long session. But I, it's not a formal work group. There was just conversations of, okay, let's move forward with what everyone can agree with now and work the other portions, that there's going to be disagreement on how it's implemented in the longer session when there's more time, so.
It's a really difficult, it's a really difficult problem too, because exempt wells, I mean, the amount of, the application process is pretty minimal, the amount of data and record keeping that the, that the state has on exempt, you know, domestic wells all over the state is minimal. So if you, you know, if you, if you want to really address people stealing groundwater to do black market marijuana production, you actually have to know a lot more about the domestic well situation than we do.
The other, and just jumping forward, the next bill I have on that list is 4130. Now, this is a bill that didn't pass, but this was the Wildlife Corridors Bill that I just had referenced. While the bill didn't pass in the budget reconciliation, the $7 million outlined in the bill started at 10, but it did amend it down to seven and then sent to Ways and Means. The bill stayed in Ways and Means, but became a line item in the budget. And so that will move forward in funding, and I believe it will be going through ODF and W. But, sorry, it'll be going through ODOT. But the bill requires them to coordinate with ODF and W and other community partners to identify the right locations. So if there's some specific place in the county that this might be desired, I would share that maybe, reaching out to ODF and W and ODOT through a letter, suggesting maybe this would be a good location for that potential funding might be opportune, so. Then the next bill is the reach code, and this is where I'm going to be punting over to Ryan. So this was Senate Bill 1518, we had it in the original form as opposed. It's a priority two for us, it did pass, but was amended significantly into a work group. And so I, Ryan, if you're available, I might punt to you because you were knee deep in that conversation. And if not, I can grab that, so. So part of the conversation was that they are, this is a similar bill that came in the session previously that did not pass, it blew up the, it blew up emotionally in the building. They came back with almost the identical bill this session, proponents did. And so it did not get traction again. What the amended version was is to put together a 20 plus member work group. There is a, two seats allocated to local governments, one being from a rural organ and one outside the metropolitan area or metro area, and one from the metro area. And this group's being tasked with reviewing whether there is a potential to develop a reach code, and a reach code being one that is effectively, the goal is to help buildings, public facilities first get to a net zero, but making investments to get there. How are the investments going to be made? Are they going to be made through building codes division and ramped up aggressively? Or are they looking at maybe doing an incentive fund first? And helping public facilities get to that through investments? And then see what the remaining inventory is before we adopt a new code, portion of the building code. So that's what the interim work group is going to be filtering through. It was, it divided labor, it divided community, community partners in the lobby. So this is going to be a very large work group, but there will be most likely a product. I know it's, putting the work group together is even being very contentious. But there is going to be a product, one way or another, coming in the next session around this again. Advocates have said that. But I think what leadership's trying to force is everyone get around a table and find a compromise. Because the, the original extreme versions were not acceptable or didn't have the votes, but doing nothing is not acceptable either. So that bill did pass again, just in a very different amended version, so. Any questions there?
What's the, what's the main vision on that? Was it public buildings, zero energy?
Well, they wanted to go residential, commercial, very broad, very quick. And so that it got narrowed to public buildings first, and then it still didn't get, get agreement. So now I believe the work group is supposed to start where they left off, which was public buildings. So, yeah, so it could expand, it just is gonna, it's gonna be very, it's gonna be a very contentious work group too, so. Perfect, so I am just flipping over. Perfect, 1533 we covered, that is the technical fix. Sorry, I'm just flipping through all of the pages and just seeing the highlighted ones that are passed. The other one that passed that we had as a priority to support was House Bill 4004. And this is related to human services and behavioral health. This was OHA to distribute grants to behavioral healthcare providers for staff compensation. And in our last conversation, we knew this was going to Ways and Means, it wasn't in Ways and, it was in the budget. The budget was just getting ready to go to the floors. That made it, stayed in the bill, and I believe I was able to send over the language to some of the details of how that funding is going to work to our department. And so that you, the county can prepare to maybe apply for some of those grants. So it does outline what can, they can be used for and what they can't be used for, hoping there's some flexibility that gets built into that. But just letting you know that that bill did pass, the funding was allocated then in the budget reconciliation bill. And that process will begin with them distributing funds. Because I believe they have to get that out this year, if I remember the verbiage right. Those grants need to be distributed immediately, so. Second one, again with healthcare, is House Bill 4052. We have that as a priority to support, and this required OHA guided by an advisory committee to provide grants to operate two culturally and linguistically specific mobile health units as a pilot program and to improve health outcomes impacted by racism. And so that did move forward as well, it got funded in the budget reconciliation bill. There was some parameters put around the funding for the mobile units. I believe this agency is also looking at, asked for some flexibility there because there's a federal grant that's going to be coming available here soon that they want to use some of these dollars for to go after for the match, and they were allowed that. But if they are not successful in the grant, the money has to go back to this bill's purpose. And so it was not a significant portion of it, but they do want to just be able to have the ability to go after more funds if they're available, so.
And that was bill number 4052?
That was 4052.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The next one, not a problem, the next one is 1545, Senate Bill 1545. And this was the governor's workforce development investment package that did get funded. A little bit in a different way than she proposed it. But a lot of the funding is going to go to HAC to, to start implementation of training opportunities. Also, they want to, HAC is going to have a robust rulesmaking process because they are going to have to start tracking these investments, which they have not done before. The committee, the joint Ways and Means, when we last met, it was in joint Ways and Means. It was starting to go to the floors. There was a robust conversation on the floors that legislators are going to keep an eye on these funding dollars. They're going to HAC under the purview of the governor. But there was a robust conversation that HAC has not historically chosen supporting apprenticeship and other avenues versus taking care of their, the budgets, is how the floor conversations went. And so there's several legislators that got up and spoke saying, we are going to be requiring HAC to come back and report on the metrics of these investments, making sure that money's getting to the students and programs and not getting eaten up by administration. And so that one will have robust reports for the next several legislative days and likely during the next full long, full session. As part of that, there were some investments in apprenticeship and training. I believe one in Central Oregon, one in the Columbia Basin, Maro County, Umatilla County area, and then one in Treasure Valley Community College over in the Ontario area. And those are to be focusing on apprenticeship opportunities.
Well, that sounds like something that we're generally have been, you know, aiming towards or supporting here. The apprenticeship opportunities, CLCC is opening up their apprenticeship for a couple of the trades. And, you know, it's, it was pointed out, I mean, this is the original four-year degree, being able to work and study to get the credentials to be able to do a trade and then have a great long career.
And my understanding was building trades was, was one of the sectors that the governor's package specifically targeted. Can you, could you run through for us what some of the other kind of sectors are?
Yes, well, no, I can't because it was not spelled out as much. They just lumped it as apprenticeship, but I can, I am in the process of, my paperwork has breaking down of trying to take everything and put what equated to the $400 million for a housing package, the 100 million for childcare, 100 million for, 150 million for education, and then her 200 million for this. It's broken across all these different agencies in the budget. I will be able to provide that, Commissioner, I'm just not done with it yet. I'm trying to figure out, they note in the budget report, hey, this, go to this section over here for the rest of the investment. And I'm just trying to piece it all together into one document, one location for you, if that's helpful. So, and I'm happy to submit that as a public record if you need it. I just want to make sure that I'm accurate, I'm not miss, miss speaking, or miss spoken on anything. And getting people's hopes up that there might be an investment in something that there's not.
It'll be great to see that, thank you.
East Cascade Works, you know, the Workforce Investment Board. I know there's some emails celebrating the investment too, so that's another place that we can digest how it really affects, you know, our, our local efforts for employment opportunities too. So I'll, and I'm on that board, so I'll learn about it. I just saw an email saying, yay, but I don't know what that means yet.
No, so I, I apologize, it's not done yet, it's just a matter of trying to piece it all together, Commissioners. And so I- it all together commissioners um and so ideally page one, I do have done that as the investments and other appropriations we just discussed and then page two will go right into the housing package, then the education package, childcare package, and then on the back page is the workforce investment package and so um I just want to make sure that I'm leaning that correctly um so that it's done right, so. So um the next bill that they did pass also was related to uh Senate Bill one five five five. Um we have this is a priority to support and this was um additional reimbursement for newborn nursing home visit uh not nursing home, nurse home visiting services. So this was a bill that was uh passed for um in the two thousand nineteen session and they came back asking for additional funding um because the costs were a little bit more than they anticipated. So this was a priority uh this was a priority to bill for the county, it did get funded and the bill itself passed it uh passed making sure that the funding allocation was um directed appropriately. Um the other bill, one Senate Bill one five five four, um this one uh directs OHA to study study the public health response to COVID nineteen pandemic, this was a priority to support. Um this one did not come out, uh it did pass, um but it did not pass with universal support. There were portions of the Republican Caucus in both chambers that opposed it, not feeling there was enough detail and uh just to be frank, of oh worried that the agency will rev- uh look at county saying you didn't do it right, but then ha- uh and kind of um passing the buck on uh what some legislators thought as um that needed is a better response to COVID. And so there there was a robust conversation about that on the floors, but it still did pass significantly with both with bipartisan support in both chambers, but I just wanted to let you know that there and a- as OHA reaches out to study that with our county public health, that there there was a notion or a notion on the floor that there's legislative intent that they that they are um evaluating their process as well as the county process, so. And likely will develop uh that will likely develop into recommendations for legislation next session um regardless if COVID is completely over or not, um just response to that type of public health emergency, they are anticipating bills being proposed um to help uh modernize the the state's response um so that it did happen again at the levels it did on the initial side, so. All right, um next bill, um this one is one I just wanted to note because Commissioner there, you uh asked me multiple times, so yes, Senate Bill fifteen seventy-three, this was the one that was Senator Knopes allocating funding to the State Forest Department um for thinning and uh since uh Commissioner Chain, you also uh mentioned this is a priority just or actually hesitations on that because it was there was a there's new more work that needs to be done to specify how all those funds would have been used, um that did not pass, it did get moved to Ways and Means in the final week, um but the and the intention on the record was that a conversation will be played out in the interim, it did pa- uh it did go through the Senate for a vote, um but it did end up in the Ways and Means uh House side uh just to to basically stall that bill so a co- conversation, a more broad conversation with all counties can be had during the interim. So um Commissioner, I believe if if the our our concerns about making sure that that funding is targeted or there's a plan for that funding on the right lands or it can be maximized so that the we get biggest thing for our buck on those, um that would be part of that conversation if we need to be involved, um I just want to note that um there's intentions to have the conversations, but it um there's no formal process as of yet.
Yeah, if there's going to be um if there's an opportunity to do work on that bill between now and the next long session um to to make sure that it's as good as it can be and it really provides the most benefit it can in Deschutes County, uh I I would definitely love for us to engage with Senator Knopes' office on that.
Sounds good, sounds good. Um and I will reach out to remind him that if you're okay with that, um commissioners, I will just send a a kind email saying, hey, if this conversation moves forward, we'd love to be part of it, so.
Please, thank you.
Okay.
And there were twenty-five counties that wanted to be part of it, remember, twenty-five counties added to be wanted to be part of this, so.
Yes.
Clearly, there was um recognition.
Perfect, no problem. And the last bill I have on here that we had as a priority to support um that passed was fifteen seventy-six and this was the establishment of a stewardship program for mattresses um that did get passed and funding was appropriated for the setup of that program um and the work through the agencies with local governments to set it up, so it is not um the sites required in the bill are not statewide sites, every county doesn't have to have a site, but some everybody has to have a plan in place, there will be specific sites throughout the state and those counties that don't have one have to have collection days, things like that spelled out in the bill, um but there was funding attributed in the budget reconciliation for that because there was a concern that it would be a unfunded mandate to stand up the program and it's not just for the agency but for the locals, so um that passed with funding attached.
How much is the funding, Phil, do we know?
Say that again?
What is the funding number?
I don't know, it was just what the fiscal was in the bill and I can get you that.
I mean, Chad will be very excited that we have that bill.
No, a problem, I just want to make sure I'm getting the right number that passed. All right, so the uh fiscal on that bill was a hundred and uh fifty-six thousand uh six hundred and four dollars for the rest of this biennium and then a hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and nine dollars for the next biennium, um so they built in roll-up costs for administration, things like that, so that entire fiscal was funded.
Thank you.
But with the FTE on the state agency side as well, um there that was also part of the conversation that DQ said if they did not get additional FTEs that that would force them to kind of rely more on the local partners to provide not only the um the program but the administration of the program, um so they did add the FTE um and establish an annual fee that would have inflation costs built in so that that position is funded and um potentially go a- as the program grows, it would grow, so.
What's the inflation number they're using?
I don't know that, they did not put that in there, I know um in some of the other conversations on budget, not this bill specific, they they you they check it every year, but I know right now some of the healthcare inflation numbers were in the six to seven percents, um but that obviously was not this bill specific and I know different things have different inflation, but um uh just they were looking at six to seven percent in other areas of the budget.
Well, for the mattress project, I'd like, you know, and we could do this internally, have Chad come back and see how how are we implementing that, I don't know, you know, I wonder, you know, he said a lot of mattresses will end up in the transfer station, the landfill, but uh you know, are they, is it a a fee, is it a separate facility, is it, you know, I know how to do paper, plastic, tires, glass, you know, all these things, but I wonder what it looks like, so just when it comes around.
Okay, thank you so much, Phil, and we've actually used our time.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, I meant.
Perfect, that was that was all the bills, right?
Uh that was all the bills, I think we're probably really good, um thank you for going through those, appreciate it.
All right, well, thank you commissioners.
And we will talk to you soon then.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready for COVID update?
And it's been a month or more, good to see you in person.
Thank you, my sincere apologies, I realize I'm all in green today, so sorry about that.
Is that a problem, it's almost St. Patrick's Day, you know, Nahad?
It's just not fair to the Beavers fans.
Oh, and they are playing each other today, isn't that right? I think it is today.
Two thirty, yes.
Yeah, basketball, yeah.
Okay, so you're just getting ready for the big game?
Yeah, we gotta split house household.
And Emily's in green too, so we're we're really good.
Oh, all matching coordinating colors today.
Yeah, we don't see that red and silvery color color over there.
Yeah, I left it there, we might have to ask. Is Mike? Here. You want to switch?
Good morning commissioners and thanks for having us this morning for our COVID nineteen update, I think it's been about a month since we were in here, so good to be back with some some better news than we were at a month ago, so I am joined by Nahad Sodarazodi, the Director of Public Health and Michael Johnson on Zoom, my name is Emily Freeland and I am the COVID nineteen Response and Recovery Manager, um recently new position, so excited to be in this new role, um so we're gonna go ahead and get started with our presentation today. So.
Officially, congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner there, I appreciate that. Um so our take-home messages today are our hospitalizations and cases are declining um at a pretty significant rate, which is great news. Um Oregon is going to pause the quarantine recommendations effective March twelfth, so starting um on March twelfth, those quarantine recommendations that we had previously are going to be paused, um that doesn't necessarily mean that they won't need to be reinstated at some time, but with the levels that we're at right now, they're going to be paused. Um the mask requirements for schools and most indoor settings are going to be lifted on March twelfth and we still are encouraging people to become fully up to date with their vaccination series wherever they are in that process. Um so just a a quick note on this BA two subvariant of Omicron, we did want to just acknowledge that there's lots of variables changing all at once, right? So we're lifting mask mandates, we're changing our quarantine recommendations, we have spring break coming up, there's lots and lots of things that are changing and part of that pit puzzle is variants that are coming, um one of those that we're concerned about right now is BA two, so um this currently is a small proportion of what we're detecting in the US. We think it might be more transmissible than the original BA one, that original Omicron strain that we're seeing, but that's, you know, preliminary data, nothing is in set in stone.
Can you explain BA a little bit, so you know, there's this thing called COVID and then there's this thing called the variant, now we're talking BA one and two, can you help with that, just just high level?
Yeah, so high level is that um Omicron is the main strain, so BA one is the the biggest proportion or the original, you know, genetic strain of Omicron that we see and BA two is a little bit different.
Then what's BA is, I guess, what I'm asking.
Oh, I don't know what BA stands for.
I think of the Greek alphabet and.
Yeah, this is the nomenclature part of the uh Greek alphabet.
So Omicron was BA one or is BA one?
Omicron encompasses both BA one and BA two.
I'm just trying, yeah, BA, I don't know.
You're right.
Just the naming.
You're right.
Yeah, lots of confusing names and and things in this that we are always working to try to um communicate to the public because it is confusing or can be. So um both of these are variants of Omicron, so they're subvariants, they're still, if you think of it like a species, right, like there's many different kinds of dogs, they're all the same species and then we have two very different dogs within the species, right, a golden retriever and I don't know, a Yorkie, they're both still dogs, but they're different types of dogs.
Well, I was thinking that's Delta and Omicron and now we're talking BA one and BA two, so that's why I was just and we don't need to study it more, I was just wondering if there was a quick way to understand it.
Yeah, and so this speaks to the amount of change we're seeing in this virus. So if it's a bit of change, it's a subvariant, it's more of a change, then it's a variant, if it's more and more of a change, then it's a strain, so there's an evolution to how this virus uh basically progresses. And this by the virtue of saying subvariant, we're speaking to the limited amount of variation that's going on here.
Great, thank you.
So um we also wanted to just mention and we had quite a bit of questions about the new CDC community levels of risk measure, so you know, there was lots of questions and concern about the fact that masks were being lifted and where were we in community levels of transmission and hospitalization, so recently the CDC has come out with a new way of measuring risk that takes into account both the the numbers of COVID cases that we're seeing as well as the the hospitalizations to come up with a risk matrix that helps people assess, you know, what they can be doing to make choices to protect themselves and their families based on those risk levels, so um we, Deschutes County has recently moved into the medium risk category, so the CDC recommends that if you're at high risk for severe illness, you continue to wear a mask in indoor public places and talk to your doctor about what you should be doing to protect yourself and your family. So um again, with the mask mandates lifting, we really ask people be respectful of others' choices, whether they're wearing a mask or not, um and businesses' choices too, if I go into a business and they've decided that they want to continue with masking for whatever reason, that I'm respectful of that choice that they have made, um and do the same for my family, so I can make that personal risk assessment and if I'm going to visit my, you know, elderly grandparents or want to be able to visit them, you know, where they live in their, you know, care facility, then maybe I'll take additional precautions to make sure that I'm not spreading it to them. So we just wanted to do a quick reminder about the things that we have to do and the things we want to do, so our obligations and ambitions within public health in this COVID structure that we have, so there's lots of things we have to do, we have to provide public information, whoop, wraparound support, um isolation motel for those who don't have a way to isolate away from others, um and outbreak response. What we want to do is be within the top five counties for service quality and cost for vaccination and testing and those assurances that we're making sure um are available in our community. So next, I'm going to pass it over to Dr. Johnson, who's gonna do a medical system update.
Thank you very much and good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Dr. Johnson.
I I apologize, this first slide is pretty busy, um but I'll I'll go through it fairly quickly, um mostly because it's such good news, it doesn't require a tremendous amount of interpretation, but um so over the last couple of weeks, we've had on average forty-one hospital beds occupied um and predicted for the the coming two weeks, uh we're gonna cut that number in half, uh which is nice, the um I the mask mandate, the removal of the mask mandate at the state level is is based roughly upon the uh number of hospital beds that are occupied um for a hundred thousand people and when you look at the the state level and and that translates to about ten beds per hundred K, um and we are currently at uh you know, it's actually a couple of people less than this now, but um we have a threshold of about twenty-five here in central Oregon because we have about two hundred fifty-three thousand um residents that in in our tri-county region, we're below that and I anticipate that we will remain below that um for the for the coming weeks certainly. There's two very important assumptions that kind of um are foundational for all of these um modeling efforts and primarily um that I think we have assumptions in the model for the the booster rate uh for those who are eligible and if that continues um as expected, then these will be the results as well as no new variant um that emerges that will evade these natural or vaccinated immunity. Uh next slide, please. So I mean, everybody is uh fairly aware that there is a lot of opportunities for getting tests nowadays and not all of them um are going through um the agencies or the locations that um send their members up to OHA, so uh the the raw number of positive cases um is a little bit uh difficult to to make direct comparisons for time periods in the recent past, um but they are coming down sharply as you can see. Um I I think a little bit uh a better metric perhaps uh to take a look at to see, to assess our current severity of the situation is is the positivity rate, um and so uh that is nice and low right now, uh both for Deschutes County as well as. Next slide, please. The the number of vaccinations, the rate of vaccinations uh lately has been almost completely flat, there are uh some that are trickling in and that number is is continues to raise just a little bit for the number who are boosted, um but it's it's generally pretty flat, um and even more so, um if I might say for the other two counties in our tri-county region, um but you know, Deschutes County has has performed quite well, um we're two point three percentage points above the state average, uh when you look at people of all ages and we're three and a half percentage points above um the the rate of boosted individuals for eighteen years and older, so well done. And the next slide kind of shows like I think this is an incredible story and this is my is my last slide, let me spend just a little bit of time here on this one. Deschutes County has the sixth highest vaccination rate, and we have the fourth lowest death rate per capita. That is not by accident. This relationship is incredibly strong. The correlation between those two lines, the vaccination rate and the deaths per 100,000, it's an inverse relationship, so it is a correlation of negative 79, which is incredibly high, if you're familiar with those kind of statistics. And to kind of translate this into what this might mean, for instance, if Jefferson and Crook Counties followed the same path for their vaccination rates that Deschutes County did, they'd have about 1/10th as many deaths. They would have around 30 instead of the around 300 that they've experienced. And conversely, if Deschutes County had the same vaccination rate as Jefferson and Crook County, we would be looking at about five and a half times as many deaths. We would have around 630 versus the 117. Now, I do have to say that these are members from OHA, so there's a little bit of lag in the, in the reporting of deaths, but they're consistent across all the counties. So I think that these comparisons are incredibly valid. The only other thing that I want to say is, this looked so strong, I was really kind of questioning these results. So I thought maybe there were some confounding variables with regard to the demographics or the socioeconomic situation within all of these counties. So I did a pretty elaborate regression on this, and I included population, ethnicity, percent female, percent over 50, or 65, median age, the percent of households that are owned by, you know, occupied houses that are owned by the same occupant. And the only, the only factor that came into the model with a significant predictive capability was vaccination rate. So, and I've since looked at this at the global level, and unbelievably similar correlation of around 79%. So let there be no question that we have done ourselves a fantastic favor by pushing the vaccinations the way that we have here in Deschutes County. I just wanted to share that information. That's my last slide, so if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them, otherwise I'll pass the mic.
Thank you very much. Great analysis, understanding that. It's interesting to be able to look back, and I'm sure, you know, gathering data the whole time has been, this is the value of looking at the numbers as it was happening and now after the fact, not that we're done with this, but I mean, at a point in time.
Right.
Thank you very much, Dr. Johnson. So we should go back to our.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
Our local data, then?
Yeah, so I'll pick up here with our local data. So we're going to go over our cases and deaths, and very similar to the graph that Dr. Johnson just showed with the numbers, we've had 45,435 cases reported through the system. So like he mentioned, as we've rolled out more and more different types of tests and at-home tests, there is a significant number of those that are not being reported because people have the information at home and they can go ahead and take an at-home COVID test wherever they can get that and go ahead and isolate for at least that five days. So I just wanted to clarify with the information about the quarantine and isolation guidelines. So quarantine is a term that we use to talk about people who have been exposed to COVID but are not yet symptomatic or have the disease, and they need to stay away from others in case they get it so they don't spread it. And isolation is that, stay home if you're sick. So isolating from others when you do have COVID or you're ill is an important thing still, and we really want to encourage people to keep staying home if you're sick, take a test, either an at-home test if you are not at high risk for severe disease or you're probably not going to need treatment, or, you know, if the access that you have is that at-home test, go ahead and do that. We've had 245 deaths in Deschutes County, so like Dr. Johnson mentioned, that is a pretty significant correlation with our vaccination rates that would be much higher if we had not had those vaccination rates. So this week, we have had 34 average daily cases. That's down 25% from last week and is about 120 cases per 100,000 population as compared to the statewide average of about 96.2. So we're still testing and detecting more cases and having more cases reporting to us than other places in the state. And this may have something to do with our testing and how many tests we're doing through laboratory-based testing. So again, this does not count all those at-home tests. This week, we had 845, which was actually up from last week's tests that were administered. That's about 300 tests per 10,000 population, and statewide, people are running about 270 tests per 10,000 population. But our test positivity rate has decreased significantly, so almost half of what it was the week prior, and down even more than that since the last time we talked to you, when I believe it was up around 28%. So.
Sorry, I'm just trying to synthesize all that. So we're doing more testing than the state average, and our positivity rates are lower?
Correct.
Okay.
But we're still detecting more cases than the statewide average.
Our rate is the same as the statewide rate positivity.
The same, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Same positivity rate, but we're running more tests, therefore we have more cases.
Got it, okay.
So speaking of vaccination, our vaccination rates are very high. In our 65 and older, we're about 100%, and that drops to about half of our 5- to 17-year-olds who are vaccinated. This leads into our messaging around getting boosted and up-to-date on your vaccinations, which we have pretty high numbers of those that are vaccinated and eligible going back for a booster in Deschutes County. And we continue to have our clinics and other means by which people can get their boosters when they're eligible and ready for that. Another thing that we look at and is really important in our work and guides a lot of what we do is vaccination by race and ethnicity. So we can see that there's a highly variable number from about 98% down to 60% for the Hispanic or Latinx communities. So a lot of our vaccination work is shifting, instead of mass vaccination or larger clinics, to targeted populations and education to try to make sure that people have the information that they need to make informed decisions and get their vaccination if they choose. So I'm going to do a quick financial update on the ARPA funds that you have approved to help support all this work that we've been doing. You had approved 2.35 million. We've expended about 84% of that. Our average weekly February expense has decreased significantly from the previous weeks. We continue to scale back as we can. So, you know, we still have lots of questions, and our hotline is still pretty busy, but we're scaling back, and at the rate we're at, these funds should last through late April. Another piece of good news that helps, you know, prop up some of our vaccination work and that education surrounding that is that FEMA reimbursement has been extended through June, so we thought that was going to end at the end of March. So we have a little bit more funding through FEMA a little longer.
And Emily, if I may just put in a plug, I believe Eric Crop will lead a discussion around different scenarios that you might want to consider in terms of our service level when it comes to COVID response next week. So just giving you a heads up about that conversation.
So as far as vaccination, what is available and where? As we've seen from probably the mass vax and then, you know, significantly decreased demand throughout the summer, and then when boosters were available in the fall, there was a huge amount of demand, we're back to somewhere where there is lots of vaccination available for those who want it, if they want to start their series, if they want to complete their series, get their booster. There are many community partners that are vaccinating, including pharmacies, primary care, urgent care sites, as well as our community clinics that we have, continuing to stand up those community clinics, and pretty much you can walk in and get your vaccination really quickly and ask any questions that you'd like to our highly-trained staff. As far as testing, like I've mentioned before, we are kind of having a frame shift as far as where people can get testing and what's the most accessible and easy way for them to do that. So you can call your medical provider to schedule a test, you can continue to go to those curative sites that we've mentioned before. OHA has been a great partner in getting three curative sites set up throughout central Oregon, so in Redmond and then two here in Bend. Those have both rapid PCR, PCR and antigen testing at them, depending on what the person is looking for, and is available for travel testing as well, which I know is going to be a big question coming up with spring break and a lot of people traveling. You can go to an urgent care, you can go to our website and find more information, or if you have trouble navigating the internet or just have some questions, you can always call our hotline, and the people that are on there can help navigate you towards a test. We also want to mention the male and PCR testing, which is another option for travel that can meet those needs for some people. And if you are traveling, it's really important that you think about what the requirements are for the destination that you're going ahead of time, and schedule your tests before, you know, way in advance so that you can make sure that you're ready and not scrambling the day before you need to leave, along with packing your bags and all those other things.
I can tell you that the one at COCC in Redmond works really well, too. My son had to drive up to that one the other day, and oh my gosh, how does, you know, I think it was gone like three minutes. So truly, they do work really well. He used the one here in Bend at COCC, I think at Christmas, and then this one, so.
Yeah, it's good to hear that feedback.
Yeah, they're very efficient.
Yeah, we have lots of options still available, but again, people need to know what types of tests are accepted, and it can be kind of complicated. So, but it's, you know, check your destination and what those requirements are. So resources and support, you know, there's lots of information out there, and sometimes it's hard to know where to go to find it if you don't know what to look up. How would you know to look up curative and that testing information if you didn't know? So you can certainly visit our website. On our main Deschutes County page, there's a COVID box right at the very front that has lots of our frequently visited pages and sites that can guide you in the right direction. St. Charles has tons of great information on their website. You can always email us, specific questions, and then our hotline is available, and, you know, staff are on to answer questions or direct you in the proper direction for any kind of questions you have. So, that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, Nahad, did you want to say anything like go docs or anything?
I have a lot of questions as well.
Go ahead, please, Commissioner.
If you wanted to say anything generally, Nahad, before I ask questions, go ahead.
Generally, I would add that we're at a point at this juncture where being empowered and educated on doing individual or family-level risk assessment is really critical for our functioning. So when I look at my own situation, I think about my underlying conditions that I might have and situation I may be in physically or health-wise. I look at whether I'm vaccinated or not, I look at my household and whether I live with vulnerable people or not. And these are all variables that go into my personal decision-making and the individual choices and family choices we're going to make. So I want to encourage our committee members to feel empowered and get the resources that they need to do that level of analysis for their own decision-making. That's it.
Thank you. So as we look forward from this point, we're in a great place. The Omicron wave is, seems to be subsiding, but I am, you know, I want to make sure that we are prepared for the future, that we have adequate resources for the future. A lot of that really depends upon, you know, it seems like it depends upon what's going to happen in terms of new variants. And we had a little bit of discussion about this BA2 variant, and I guess one really specific question about the BA2 variant is, are the vaccines that we have as effective with the BA2 variant as the BA1 variant? And we know that the vaccines helped us, you know, there was substantially more breakthrough cases with Omicron than there had been with other variants, but that the vaccines provide us with substantial protection against severe illness or hospitalization. So I guess that's just my first question is, you know, how, do we have any understanding of how effective the vaccines are against this BA2 variant versus the BA1?
I have a response, but I want to give the floor to Michael first, who's sitting there patiently, see if he wants to start off.
I will be quite frank with you, I don't know, but I do know that when we perturbate, when we wiggle those parameters within the model that have to do with breakthrough rates and transmissibility, I am not seeing much difference at all in the future of hospitalizations. They aren't, it's not extremely sensitive to that. The severity of the variant is, however, the model is quite sensitive to that. So if BA2 were found to be much more severe than BA1, that would, could put a bump in the future number of hospitalizations. But when I, you know, tweak the parameters in the model to investigate other hypothetical situations, the breakthrough rate or its effectiveness in evading immunity is the same thing. It's not incredibly sensitive to that, nor is it sensitive, like I said, to the transmissibility. It's all kind of tied around the severity. And I feel pretty confident that, from what I've been reading, that the severity is not, at least with this particular subvariant, not of great concern.
Yeah.
Good to know.
And the only caveat maybe to that, I would add, is that for both the subvariants, being up-to-date with a vaccine shows there is a high level of protection. So it's not just getting our primary dose, first and second dose, it's really the additional dose that we have been referring to as boosted, but now it's shifting towards being up-to-date. So, and I don't, we don't, as far as I know, Commissioner, we don't have any data on the, of how this subvariant BA2 is potentially circumventing our vaccine immunity, vaccine-related immunity at this point, so we don't have, we're still collecting data at the national, international level to answer that question.
Thank you. So the next question is, should we expect other variants to emerge that may be highly transmissible, highly transmissible, and also severe in terms of illness? I mean, is that, what kind of a poss, I know that there's, a lot would go into predicting that, but I mean, is that a real possibility that another variant will emerge that is both highly transmissible and also very severe? I mean, it seems like we were pretty lucky with Omicron, that it was very transmissible, but, you know, not necessarily as severe as some prior variants.
Yeah, maybe I can start and others can add to. I think it's good to remind ourselves of the mission of any virus, which is to survive, right? And it really doesn't care how severe it is, per se. I mean, it can be as severe as it wants to be, as long as it can be transmissible and jump from one person to another and still survive, that's what it's after. If we were to look at the past behavior and predict the future, we would say probably another variant, subvariant is likely. But in terms of whether or not it's going to take a direction of, in terms of severity level, which direction it's going to take, I think it's mostly anyone's guess at this point. So let me see if Emily and Michael want to add to it.
Oh, I want to ask Michael a question. Remember when you were doing your modeling, you had said we were going to get up to 95 beds in the hospital? Did we ever at that point get up to 95? I didn't see it on a daily count that I watch, you know, the Monday through Friday that's posted.
We fell short of the initial predictions for the Omicron variant. Initially, we thought that it would exceed the levels that we saw for the Delta variant, and thankfully, it didn't do that, although that same pattern was observed in other parts of our country and other countries around the globe. of our country and other countries around the globe. We did not see that materialize the way that we did, but we still had 100 beds that were occupied at the peak of this Omicron variant. And what was that date?
It never showed up on the daily count because I watch the daily count. I know, you're going to see it all day long. I see it once a day.
Right here in our packet.
Yeah, it was on January 28th, we had 100 people, not at midnight census, but 100 patients who had come through the hospital on that calendar day. And that is, it's going to be typically a larger number than the midnight census, because if you have, if you discharge 15 people, but 15 new people come in, then I'm counting the throughput, the patient throughput, because it's a much more stable figure for me to use in the modeling. We had 100 beds occupied on January 28th, and I believe we had like 115 or so in the Delta wave.
And we did have thousands of positives. That was the scary thing, you know? We definitely had weeks of high numbers there. So thank goodness, what is it, only 100 went to the hospital.
Yeah, and I think that that was kind of Michael's message last time we were here, was that that peak was not as bad as we thought it would be as far as hospitalizations. And the two kind of variables that I remember him speaking about was our vaccination rate was really high and our mask use at that point, like compared to other places that didn't have that, was also higher. So you can correct me if I'm wrong, but those were kind of, I feel like the message from last time was that that peak of hospitalizations did not hit kind of what we had thought it would in the original modeling, but there were a couple of variables that kind of explained why that might happen. And it was that sort of pat on our own back for having great vaccination rates and people asking, you know, doing what we've been asking them as a community in Central Oregon.
The question remains, though, the number of people in the hospital today, I believe, was like 13 over 24, and it says those 13 are vaccinated, but are they boosted too? Are they just vaccinated? It's 54%. That's, Michael, I mean, that's a question, I just wondered if they are fine-tuning that. I know the state makes a difference on their positive numbers. If they're boosted too, that's in a separate percentage?
Vaccinated and boosted are falling into the same category there. When you look at the number of people who are hospitalized, who are boosted or have additional doses, that is definitely a lower number. However, that's just a very difficult thing to look at on a day-to-day basis. And when we have small numbers of patients in the hospital, like we do now, thankfully, there's going to be tremendous variability on those, on the percentages of breakthrough. This month, we're actually doing better for breakthrough cases as a percentage than we were in February, but we're only looking at the first week of March. But we've had fewer percentage of breakthrough cases in March than we did in February by the time it was over. I don't know, it's just, I just really caution anybody who makes judgments about any of these figures on a day-to-day basis, you really do have to look at some kind of aggregate because there's just tremendous variability. And keeping in mind, too, that the average age of those people who are coming through as a breakthrough case are typically 10 to 13 years older. They're people with, you know, tremendous immune problems and much more susceptible to that, so the vaccine doesn't have quite the same effect on people with, you know, that are in that condition. So if you're under 65 and you're relatively healthy, you're staying out of the hospital with a vaccination. I think that remains true.
So, Michael, is it fair to say, I mean, this is how I summarize it in my head, is that for the most part, you got to have a reason to be admitted. I mean, it's either there's a risk factor involved, underlying condition, maybe age and all that, or on or under vaccinated when it comes to COVID. That's for the most part, I think, the observation we're seeing. But Commissioner Chang, to your point, I want to maybe address any misperception around what's happening right now with the cases and admissions being lower. It is true that the intensity or the pressure of the height of the Omicron has dwindled down, but our work, especially in public health and in the community, for those people or those entities that are part of the response, our work hasn't gone away. Right now, we're putting in the pieces in preparation for what's next. We don't know when it's coming. We don't know what shape it's going to have, but we know something is probably on the horizon. And part of that, through your support as the commission, is setting up the standalone COVID structure, making sure we're recruiting people, putting them in the right positions, they're getting trained, they're getting ready, working with our temps, making sure that we're doing the right thing in terms of right sizing our response. So we're really working on the preparation phase of the response at this point. So the work hasn't gone away, and I want the community to know full well that it's not like we are just washing our hands and moving on. We're actually preparing ourselves and giving people some time off. Part of the preparation is to give people time off. So Crystal, for example, Sully, who's well-known to all of you, is on leave this week. I'm hoping to get Emily to go on leave soon. I'm going to take spring break off and go to Portland, so if you have any suggestions, let me know. But that's part of our preparations in terms of our self-care as well, and that's for the entire department.
Thank you. And I had asked a question earlier about predictions about future variants, and Nahad had a chance to answer, but Emily and Dr. Johnson didn't necessarily get a chance to answer my question, and I would love to hear if they have anything more to say about that at this point.
I would just echo what Nahad said. I feel personally, like the last time we felt this way was right around, you know, July, the 4th of July. We had high vaccination numbers, you know, we were shifting from the incident management team and all the support that came with having all of those people from different entities and bringing the response back into public health, kind of assuming that things would, you know, gradually go down and we would be sort of in this more educational and recovery type of phase. What does that look like? Where do we go from here? Clearly, that didn't materialize, right? We quickly, within six weeks, were back in the thick of it and have been, you know, working really, really hard to have a response and do what we're required to do by the state, as well as what we think is best for the community and, you know, putting all these things into play. So, you know, what Nahad said is, you know, we're preparing, assuming that it will happen again. What that looks like and how, you know, what our responses and requirements are, we don't know. And that's been the hard thing with this, is, you know, it's always something different, but we are taking time off and right sizing, you know, trying to make sure that our staff understands what they should be doing and how they can fill this time, whether that's taking vacation or for the temp employees, you know, balancing how many hours we can give them, but not losing them forever, because if something happens with, you know, we're removing many variables all at the same time, right? We're removing masks, we're removing this quarantine, spring break is coming, all of these things are sort of happening at once. And I have to admit, like, my team is working really hard to just think, okay, what next? What happens next? And if we're not really busy, how can we be preparing for when we are? And thinking of all those different efficiencies we can put in place, whatever that is, or, you know, making new relationships with other entities so that we're ready to go when something does happen. So, I mean, like I said, like they said, we don't know when, we don't know what, but we're trying to make sure we're ready as best we can.
Mr. Chang, I would love to be able to give you better information. I am very aware of my limitations when it comes to understanding the epidemiology of all of this. I have a go-to person here at St. Charles that I haven't spoken with for a couple of weeks on this, but I will go to Dr. Marie, who monitors this incredibly closely and get her take on it, because I think she is my expert that has been able to give some pretty good insight to that, of what they're finding, what the possibilities are that their, the variant is of concern or whatever. But I'll follow that up with an email, if that's okay.
That would be great. Thank you.
I did have one last comment that I would like to make, that I want to make sure, it's very easy to discount this last surge and say, you know, it wasn't that big of a thing. Yeah, we dodged the bullet because it didn't go as high as we thought. The length of stay was lower, it wasn't quite as severe. But, you know, we still had 34 people die in St. Charles in February. We had 24 die in January. You know, that one out of 11 people that were hospitalized in February died. So it may not be overall as severe as Delta was, but it's not like saying, oh, it's just like the flu. This was, it was significant. And when you talk to those 450 people that were hospitalized in January and 376 that were hospitalized in February, I mean, those were our first and third most populated months for hospitalizations. So it was so transmissible that it outweighed the severity and made it still a thing. So, I don't know. When we hear in the news and if the next one that comes along, people say, oh, it's not, it's about as severe as Omicron, so we don't have to worry, I caution that mindset. And it goes right back to what Nahad was saying. This is a very personal choice when it comes to evaluating risk within your life. And just, let's respect everybody's opportunity to do that, because it wasn't trivial to all those people or their families who had people die during this Omicron variant. Sorry to get up on the soapbox, but I don't think it should be downplayed.
No, thank you. And I, you know, one of the things that also concerns me is the earlier waves of COVID that we experienced in the community, we had this, we did have a taper off and we had a little break, but between the Delta variant surge and the Omicron variant surge, we didn't really get a break here. And, you know, if that, understanding that that is actually a possibility now, I mean, it should make us all very wary about relaxing as we see the Omicron wave waning.
Well, I'm actually really glad to hear that you, your health department, is all taking personal time to do something else in their lives. I think that truly isn't balanced what life is all about. If you just, you know, this has gone on for two years and you really have a great vacation, you know? I'm glad to hear it.
Thank you.
And welcome again, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for inviting us.
Yes.
So Commissioner Dare, chairperson, you'll let us know for the next update, maybe in a month?
Yeah, I think, yeah, probably a month would work. Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Let's see, we have a COHC grant award acceptance.
Thank you for inviting me. For the record, my name is Rita Bacho. I am the program manager for Public Health Advancement and Protection. I am here to request the board's permission to accept a grant from COHC to improve under two immunization rates. So about three months ago, my team presented some data on current childhood immunization rates in the tri-county, and we obtained the board's permission to apply for a COHC grant to improve these immunization rates. Fortunately, COHC has served as a notice of award of this grant, and would like to go ahead and accept these funds to be able to do this very important work. And just as a refresher, the percentage of two-year-olds in the tri-county who were up-to-date for immunizations was 75% for Crook County, 71% for Deschute County, and 66% for Jefferson County. And this is according to the Oregon Health Authority Immunization Program data for 2020. These immunization rates are below the regional health improvement plan's goal of 80%. Additionally, Deschute County, Jefferson and Jefferson Counties' immunization rates have decreased through the course of COVID, the COVID-19 pandemic. We would like to be able to improve these rates to at least 80% regionally in each of these counties. So Deschute County applied for this grant with your permission, and we have received a notice of award of $419,428 to support the Central Oregon Regional Childhood Immunization Rate Quality Improvement Project. This grant, however, does not allow us to charge indirect costs, so I just wanted to put that out there. So this amount does not include the indirect costs that will be in Karen, because of the nature of this grant. So with this grant, we hope to hire an immunization coordinator for three years in order to support this project, immunization quality improvement for under-two-year-olds in Central Oregon. So it will be mainly Deschute County, Crook County, Jefferson County, and the confederated tribes of Warm Springs. So that is all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Rita, the percentages, is it 75% for Deschutes County?
It's 71% for Deschute County.
Okay, so Crook actually has higher.
Correct.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought, but I was, okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, so Deschute County is in the middle. Yeah, sorry.
Yes, I know, I realize, we, the goal is 80%, and we, truly, it seems like we're below it.
Correct.
So the person that was mentioned to be hired, is that going to be a grant-funded position for that three-year project?
Correct. So that person, we've received approval to get, to fund that position with $356,428. So that would cover personnel costs. We have also approval to use $63,000 to cover training, and then $1,000 for materials and supplies. We'll also give a stipend to Crook and Jefferson County. They also have immunization coordinators who'll be helping us in this week. So $2,000 will be given for that as well. So actually, materials and supplies is $60,000, so $63,000 in total for all those extra costs, aside the personnel costs, is what we have requested.
Rita, I think this is pretty straightforward, but, you know, with public health projects, with behavioral health projects, I always ask the question, you know, how do we, how do we measure our performance, you know, at the end of the project or during the project? You know, how do we know whether we're being successful? And with this project, I mean, is it as basic as looking at our immunization rates a few years ago and comparing to 75%, 71%, and 66%? Or are there other ways along the way that we can kind of measure how successful we've been and how we're doing in terms of performance?
I would say that measuring the increase in immunization rates would be the most clear-cut way to measure progress, but there are other ways we measure progress, which are not necessarily quantifiable. So like, when we provide education to parents and children or clinics, these are not necessarily quantifiable, but then the knowledge stays with them and it helps them to know why they are getting those immunizations. So that is another way we measure progress. So we do surveys and then we have ongoing meetings just to assess the knowledge that we've been able to impart through these grants. So that is another way we are able to measure. Um, so that is another way we are able to measure knowledge. So sometimes we do a pre and post-evaluation, um, and through that, we are able to determine how much knowledge we're able to impart, uh, because they would answer questions about their knowledge about vaccines, pre and then post-intervention. And that sometimes gives us a rough idea of how much we've impacted, aside having the numbers to compare.
Right, great. And, and, and um through those surveys, do you also um have, do you also get some indication on, you know, how to refine your, your messaging or your delivery technique or, or things like that as well? So you're getting, you're getting some real uh feedback in the system that helps you do a better job?
Absolutely, yeah. We do, some of the questions that we include are open-ended questions on how we can improve. Um, so yeah, we do get feedback um from people telling us how we can um educate people in a better way and how we can improve on the programs. Yeah, so that is um another way that we get feedback.
Great, thank you.
Well, uh, yeah, I'm excited, you know, if, if we took our eyes off the ball for these immunization levels for a couple of years, it's time to get focused, and that's exactly what the Central Oregon Health Council is offering. Here's a, a, a regional project and some money to go with it, so I'm real excited to be able to do this.
Okay.
With that, I'll move board approval of Document 2022-222, a Central Oregon Health Council grant, and the following document for board signatures, signature of 2022-013, Designating Signing Authority to Dr. Bacho.
And that's, the signing authority is just for this one document, correct? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Rita, are you a doctor? I, I mentioned it like that.
Yes, please.
That's what I thought, yeah, okay, making sure.
Thank you so much, commissioners.
Okay, now we have to.
I appreciate it.
We have to vote, we haven't voted yet.
I'll vote yes.
Okay, Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay, and the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I, I think you're gonna have a lot of work cut out for you, Rita. And I know, um.
And thank you so much for the billboard. Um, I know Morgan and Whitney are working on that, so thank you so much.
Really? I've only been asking for it for like months, so anyway, okay, glad to hear that, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, bye.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks.
Okay, it looks like we have Greg.
Good morning, Commissioners. On your agenda is the American Rescue Plan update. It's a periodic update. We come back, uh, come back um and touch base with you on periodically. Uh, so on today's agenda specifically is to give you an update on the COIC Small Business Assistant Grant Funding process, where we're at with that, and we'll be specifically, specifically looking for approval of, of a distribution method for those funds. And then also, as we do every update, is an opportunity to review the packages or the uh, the other projects that are on the list, which is attached to your doc, to your uh agenda today, part of the agenda packet. So joining me today is David Givens and uh from our internal audit, and then Dan Emerson, uh, also from my office, and I forgot to introduce myself, Greg Munn from County Finance. So in terms of background.
Greg, there wasn't anything in our packet.
Do you have a list?
I got this.
I didn't get that.
Okay.
And it wasn't in the master plan either.
Item, item number nine.
No, I know, I know it's number nine. It wasn't that. And it wasn't insurance either, because I asked for it.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
About that?
Somehow I got, yeah.
I got it.
Okay. So in terms of background, just to bring everybody up to speed today, as we've been talking about this for a few months now, is the American Rescue Plan Act provides for the rules under ARPA, uh, provide for funding, uh, costs that are, fund, uh, the grant is eligible to fund costs or net economic impact of, uh, of the pandemic on small businesses and nonprofits. So it's a category within ARPA, and uh we uh have, uh, over the course of the last several months, the boards approved about 200, 2.5 million dollars that we set aside in a reserve fund, or as, not as a reserve fund, but reserved it while at the same time contracting with COIC to help us do outreach and do a um grant, RFP, asking for small businesses that have been impacted by the pandemic. So they've done that, and last uh meeting here that we talked about this, they gave you an update on that as well. So just a short couple of data points here, they received about 290 applications for those funds, and through the course of an extensive review of tax returns, financial records, and so forth, they deemed that 91 were eligible. So they were, uh, in terms of eligibility and the amount of the potential award, uh, the amount of eligible dollars, they used 2019 as a base before the pandemic and then measured those records against 2020 and 2021 records to determine what the potential impact of the pandemic was on them. So it's a combination of loss of revenue, increase in expenses, and then those two numbers netted out with any other assistance they may have received over the course of the pandemic. That could have been CARES Act, that could have been payroll loans, that could have been um other sources of federal assistance. So all of that data and research came together in an eligibility, in a number that was eligible. So of the 290 applications received, 91 were eligible, and through that process, we determined that 8.2 million dollars were eligible in impact dollars. So the 91 eligible applications resulted in 8.2 million dollars in eligible claims. So as we've met and discussed, uh, we met individually this last couple of weeks, and have discussed, there are several different options in terms of distribution of those funds. Uh, one could simply be a flat percent of eligible costs, so we have 8.2 million in eligible claims, we have 2.5 million dollars in, in funds that are available for that, that's about 30%. It could be a, simply a 30%, 30% of your eligible claim, that could be the distribution method. It could also be a cap, we could say up to a certain amount of dollars, uh, we're gonna fund up to that amount. And I think the, the amount that would, that we had available was 38,000, that would be another method for distributing the funds. The other uh option, which we brought to you this last week, is um, is more of a curve, and so we're able to fund up to a certain amount, 100%, and then with a curve that's declining as you get to the larger claims. And the one example that we used, I think the cap was about 20,000, so any of the claims under 20,000 were 100% fully funded, and then the claim amounts as a percent of ask declined through the rest of the, and it produces a nice curve, if you remember from that graph. That, that one example maxed out the um top claim at about $75,000, and that was on a $956,000 eligible amount. So that's where we're at in terms of, of funding options, so I'd like to ask for a board direction on that. Also, at the last meeting, Commissioner Dare, you asked whether or not David Givens had had a chance to peek at the process that we'd gone through, so he has, and I brought him, I asked if he could uh sit in here with us in case you had any specific questions for him. So I would open that now if you do.
Okay, well, I know Dave worked um in fine details when we had our last grants that were truly not at this volume, or this dollar amount at the top, so I don't know. Dave, did you, did you have some good feelings about this? If we do that linear match up to the max, we'd get the 75,000 even though they were asking for what, 953,000 or something like that?
Right. Uh, Dave Givens, County Internal Auditor. My review is pretty much uh kind of reviewing to see what they had in their, their scope of the, the numbers and the process, and uh, when it came down to the, actually allocation between the things, I thought they had created a really uh, a very creative approach to balancing various things with a cap, and, and so that they, they could actually move it wherever they wanted to. So uh, I think that was a, you know, it's, it's a good approach. I, I haven't compared it to any of the other ones, but uh, it's, it's a policy decision, so it's, it's kind of, just depends on where you want to shift the dollars to. So.
Well, so we were shared uh kind of the, the concepts through the spreadsheet and the calculations and uh the vision that we had. I remember thinking, well, there's probably a curve in there somewhere, and I want to thank Dan for, you know, being the mathematical whiz on this, thinking, okay, how do we do this? Coming up with that $20,000 number and then fitting the curve to fully funding and then uh, uh, you know, uh, reducing the, the total amount as, as the curves goes on, it's a wonderful opportunity to get money out the door. We've been working on this for a while, uh, you know, reviewing those applications for, for completeness and uh, you know, the business cases. People are ready for it, and I'm ready for it too, so I, I excite, I'm excited about that curve that we found.
Yeah, I thought it was a great balance between um trying to make some of the smaller businesses who made smaller requests whole, and also um providing meaningful relief and support to, to some of the larger businesses who made larger requests.
So, yeah, the business that lost almost a million would have been getting almost at the 30%, like 285,000, um, somewhere in that neighborhood, but, and now we're gonna give the, if we do Dan's brilliant computation and do the 75,000, I mean, 75,000 is still a significant amount of funding, and it's a lot larger than what we had done before. So, but I know when people.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare, just to speak to that real quick, the, the, we did do one last review of everybody's books, and there was some uh special expenditures for that company that was close to a, a million dollars, and actually their net effect award that they're eligible for, just so you know, dropped down to 771,000 after that, so there was about a $180,000, I believe, decrease due to some technical things there.
Okay, so they're gonna get, um, if they get 75,000 then, over, okay. Thank you, Dan.
Right around there.
Pointing that out.
And, you know, as I, as I asked uh Dan and Greg about, um, you know, kind of some of the specifics for some of the, the businesses on the, on the uh larger end of the, of the curve, um, it, it sounded like a, a number of those businesses were not necessarily um, uh, impacted in terms of revenue decreases to the point where they were unprofitable. It was more a question of, you know, they had smaller profits than they would have had. And um, that made me feel better about, you know, providing some level of support. Uh, you know, being less profitable is, than, than you would have been is, is lousy, but uh, being, uh, you know, being in the red um is, is a, a bigger concern in my mind, and we want to make sure that uh as many businesses as possible come out of the pandemic uh, you know, viable uh to, to, you know, continue business into the future.
Well, and it looks like today's the day we get to finalize that then, is that correct?
Be great.
So it's really unfortunate that only a third of those businesses that took all that time, that actually qualified, I mean, when you think about it, and um, it, it might be nice to get feedback from them. Um, did they not understand what we were asking for, you know? Because they spent time too.
Yeah, exactly, and so I was just talking to Scott Acock about that this morning, and we're going to respond back to all of the businesses that were ineligible with an ex, an additional explanation of the process and, you know, to the extent that we can is help them understand why they were ineligible.
I, I, that's great, thank you, Greg.
Yep, I think so too.
Thanks for doing that, I think that's really important. Um, so do we have a motion then?
Um, I would move approval of allocation of 2.5 million dollars of American Rescue, uh, County American Rescue Plan funds um to small business and nonprofit assistance awarded on the curve that has been developed by, by staff, um, with a, a cap of 20,000 for full funding, uh, support, and a declining percentage uh to larger businesses that made larger requests.
Great motion, I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Mr. Devon?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you, and it's wonderful to see that it's still snowing, thank you. We need that.
So the second uh subtopic here, Commissioners, is uh the review of the ARPA eligible list, and is there any questions on those or any further discussion?
Before David slips away, can I just ask, one of my, one of my concerns, um, you know, when we were listening, listening to the COVID update was uh whether we have allocated enough funding, um, you know, American Rescue Plan funding for COVID response, and, you know, it, it sounds like there will be a request for release of potentially additional funding next week um to, to make, ensure we're prepared. And, and David, I know that uh the, the audit program just completed a, a review of contact investigation, contact tracing, uh, work within health services, and I was curious whether there was anything that came from that audit. I, I had a chance to skim, skim the report, but I haven't, uh, I can't, I can't say that I read it very in-depth, uh, you know, at this point, uh, but I'm wondering if there is anything that you identified uh through that audit that um would be helpful to keep in mind as we evaluate how to continue to fund COVID response?
Um, partially, I, I'd say um the, the, the audit looked at 2021 primarily, which as you're aware, didn't include some of the Omicron surge. Um, but what it did identify in terms of the trends in costs and the trends in cases was that health, the Health Services Department, public health specifically, um, did a pretty good job of managing the levels to the cases, and I think as you can see, probably going forward, they're continuing to manage and monitor those costs and cases together, so I think that's one really good observation out of there. Um, and again, uh, the costs, I think that, uh, I did break out in the report, I, I showed that the fact that they were juggling a couple different fronts, they were juggling not only case investigation and contact tracing, but also hotlines and, and other programs with this temporary, temporary labor pool. And so I think they, you know, again, it's, it's, there's a lot of different pieces to it, it's pretty complex, and I think uh what they are showing is their, their ability to be very agile in terms of moving with what happens, so.
Yeah, when you, when you said that they were managing the number of cases, does that mean they were, they were being responsive to the number of cases that?
Exactly, responsive to the, the case volumes that are coming through the surges, and then making sure they have the right staffing levels for that, which, as you can imagine, uh, getting training for remote staff and doing all that kind of stuff is, is kind of a, a big effort on their part, so um they've shown themselves to be pretty agile in that, so um that's one thing I just, you know, I, I can't, I can't fathom how they accomplish as much as they have in that, in that respect, so.
Yeah, that, that, that's a very helpful observation, so um, you know, we, we just heard them trying to forecast ahead and, and be prepared, um, and the fact that they have done a really good job of being responsive to the number of cases as, as they've, as they've come up, um, uh, makes me think that um they've done a, you know, that, that must come from doing a good job of predicting and, uh, you know, playing out scenarios and, and planning in the past, um, so that, that lends more support to, um, that lends more support to um trusting their, their planning and their anticipation in the current moment, in, in my mind.
Yeah, the, the other piece is the, the big emphasis of the, the report is on metrics, and then you, you talked specifically, and they grant you just approved, how do we measure our success? And so again, uh, what I encourage them to always be flexible with and be mindful of is, is labor metrics that help them know that their outcomes are being met, that they're doing a good job, so they know whether they need to ask for more resources for things. So again, I think it's uh, you know, again, I, there was a number of metrics they hadn't used, and I calculated for them, but uh they showed pretty positive, pretty positive things about how their outcomes had worked. Um, I was even able to benchmark those against, some of them, one of them in particular, against uh our, some of our comparable-sized counties, and they showed that they were being very, much more um able to react in the surge uh of the pandemics than some of their, of our county cohorts, so um I think, you know, all in all, I think it was a, it was a great, a great report. Unfortunately, you know, they have since changed a little bit of their modeling of how they're reacting to uh case investigation and stuff like that, so, um, but I think there's still some really good pieces that they're pulling from that, so.
Great, thank you, David.
No problem. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Dave, for coming. All right.
Any, any items on the spreadsheet, the, our? Any, any items on the spreadsheet, the ARPA list you'd like to discuss?
There was one, there was one conversation I had a couple of months back, which I'm, I don't, I don't think I followed up on enough, but I was wondering about whether a proposal had come through or not. I didn't see it on the list, but I had, I had spoken with Saving Grace about, you know, essentially what they, what they shared with me was that rates of domestic violence really spiked during, during the pandemic and they were struggling to keep up with, you know, that increased demand for their services. And so they were, they were thinking about a, you know, essentially a staffing request, which, you know, way, way, way back when we were, we were, you know, you know, that one of the initial principles that we started out with was, you know, let's try to fund things that are more like one-time funding requests as opposed to kind of ongoing staffing. And so I did talk with them about that, but I didn't see their request on the list, so I'm, I'm thinking that they, we don't have a proposal from them.
So we did receive a proposal from them, but there was not a dollar, a specific dollar ask on that. And there was just, there's not been response back from them to complete that request, but we can certainly reach out to them again.
Okay, and that would, that would be great. Thank you. Yeah, and I can, I'll try to remember to reach out to them as well.
And we didn't get a dollar request either from what, CASA? I had met with them like months ago. I don't see them here.
I would have to, I don't see them on the list, but that doesn't mean they're not on it. Can also circle back if you'd like and get more information on that one as well.
Yes, and I know the Redmond Senior Center has some asks and they're not on the list, so maybe we should ask them. I see that we still have 1.277 million left of an allocated, so I'll ask them to send something in.
We did ask about the kind of interface with the Council on Aging's work for-
Well, Redmond told me that what we did for Bend doesn't help Redmond, and very clearly, so.
I mean, that is a regional center to, you know, to prep food, to go all over.
It doesn't go to Redmond.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't. They told me it didn't.
They can, they should send in a request to-
But it doesn't go to Redmond.
Send in a request to clarify that.
The chambers of commerce have come back to us a few times, say, it looks like we're not going to qualify for this and that. And they did help distribute dollars through their funds and, you know, they're, it sounds like they keep claiming they're in limbo. I mean, and have you talked with them about that? And I'd like to support. I'm just trying to figure out what is the message.
Yeah, so I have a meeting this afternoon with Judy Trego from Sisters Chamber and Eric from the Redmond Chamber. We have a meeting this afternoon to talk about the very subject.
Yeah, so I support bringing that around and seeing if there's a good allocation and justifying it through these ARPA dollars. And then also, so the senior centers, you know, maybe, you know, maybe this is a little step here, because the Lapine Senior Center, there's the food program, then there's the facility itself and COVID has really stopped them from having the doors open for other activities, which has been the revenue. So if you separate the, the food program from just keeping the doors open and the, you know, facility rolling, there's still an ask from the seniors, the Lapine Senior Center. I think that may be the same scenario in Redmond, as in, yes, we do food programs, but, you know, other activities that have been shut down for two years really put a dent in their financials, I think, also. So, you know, we could reach out to both of those facilities. I don't know if there's anybody else that's in that same scenario.
Well, they actually, and Redmond want to redo their kitchen, too. I'm going like, all these people that need to redo their kitchen, they need to all get together and order it and hopefully it doesn't have nickel in it, right? Because that seems to be the commodity that we don't have anymore. Yes, so they, yeah, they have a huge kitchen project, too, that's, I think it's like 30 years old or something.
And I'm envisioning operation dollars impacted by not being able to have-
Fundraising?
Yeah, well, just events, you know, I mean, if there's rentals that they weren't able to do or fundraising events that they weren't able to do, that kind of thing.
Yeah. Great. And then just the, the last comment I wanted to make or question I had is, so tonight we have the joint meeting with the City of Sisters and I'll be giving the council there an update on the ARPA process that we've gone through, kind of a high level. Is there anything in particular you'd like me to cover or make sure that's information that's included for council?
Will you be giving them a recap of basically, you know, substantial awards that, that are significant to Sisters? There was one of the, one of the childcare projects. I thought it was the Re Village project was, you know, had indicated a specific intention to use the ARPA funds that we were allocating to a Sisters location, but then I couldn't, I couldn't, couldn't find that on a, on a quick search when I was speaking with, with Jim Cornelius, actually, from, from the Nugget. So if, if you could confirm that and, and include, make sure that that's included in the list, you know, that, the, the two housing allocations, I think were, were also really significant for Sisters.
I'll spotlight any of the dollars that have been allocated towards the Sisters area.
Great, great, yeah. And the, and the, the homeless outreach team support that will result in expanded services in Sisters. Those are a few that come off the top of my head.
Yes, the 800,000 for the Habitat.
So in support of Sisters, there is a Sisters Rodeo Association ask, I think it's $100,000.
They were included in the COIC application. When are we going to see then?
Are they going to, are they in there?
I was told they were in that list. I asked that about a month ago, I think.
Yeah, so this, yeah, we still need to resolve some of that thing, because, okay.
Right.
So what, will see the list, other people that are getting funding then?
Yeah, once we, I think we're almost there. We'll be able to, other than the adjustment that Dan just mentioned, is we'll be able to actually produce the distribution list with the names by them and we can get those to you.
Yeah, so that we still need to see that. Good.
And then we can also, at some point, talk about how, if there's any particular way you want to distribute those funds. We've done it every which way. We've mailed them, we've handed them out. We would probably just default to mailing them unless there was something special you wanted, wanted to do.
You mean like a photo opportunity? In front of Warrell Park? Sure, I'd like, I think that would be lovely.
Well, and I think you did, you handed out to whoever you could and then mailed the rest at one time.
Right, yes, you know.
Do you want to try to do that?
Why not? I mean, some of these people are truly going to get some money, up to, what, 20,000? That's great. I mean, I mean, people were crying last time when we handed out checks for 2,500. So, and with the gas prices today and the food prices, I think people might want to get the money today.
And I'm just envisioning, I mean, if, if we had an opportunity to, you know, hand out checks or be there, I would love to hear from some of the business owners because some of them probably see, yeah, no, this is going to stabilize me and move forward or this is going to backfill what I'm doing, but, because there's a lot, everything's moving these, everything's a moving part these days. I'd love to talk to some of these business owners about, you know, what the, what the next year looks like from their point of view or how's it been going the last six months, you know, any of those questions.
I know, I think I heard on the business this morning that inflation is at the highest point ever for businesses. That's our number one worry and it's never been this high in the history of, I think, 48 years is what they said. So, I mean, they're concerned. So, yeah, I think it'd be lovely if we could do that.
I, I, I want to disagree. I, you know, I, I definitely want to support these businesses. I think it would be great to have an opportunity to speak with some of them, but you, you think about, you think about those like big, big check events where, you know, you know, the Rotary Club has raised money for a cool project and they send, you know, hand them over a big check. I mean, we're, we're basically trying to make people whole who have, who've suffered. And it's not, it just doesn't, kind of making, yeah, I, I don't think it should be like a sort of celebratory type event.
Well, and I'm, I want to hear from them, that's exactly, I'm not thinking celebratory.
I want to hear from them.
Just the opportunity to say hi. So, as I say, I think the scenario was, if you're available between a couple hours on this day to come get a check, please do. If not, it's going to be in the mail that afternoon. Done. I'm not talking about a celebratory check situation.
And maybe we can do it outside and we can actually, it'll cause it to snow again, right?
Yeah.
Isn't that, I mean, isn't that the goal? Cold weather, snow.
Okay, well, I, I just want us to be very respectful that, that, you know, these are, these are people, these are people who have suffered some real impacts and, and, you know, I don't want any of them to feel like they have to come shake our hand to, to get a check.
Yeah, and that's not my mindset, but that's great. Thank you for sharing that. But that scenario could just like, you know, someday for a couple hours, available if you want, notified, and then if not, it'll be in the mail, moving on. Okay.
Commissioner, we had one follow-up on the ARPA that Greg, Dan and I all looked into it and the funeral expenses would not be covered under ARPA.
Okay.
Well, can we, can we explore, you know, awarding something in the range of, you know, well, I, I think the FEMA cap was 9,000? Was that, was that correct?
That's what Nick said.
Can we, can we explore awarding up to an amount of something like $10,000 from, you know, general fund or other, other sources to support, support that goal?
Certainly, that's a board's decision. We can-
My thought would be maybe $2,500, just knowing that that's just a flat, straight amount it's going to support. It just seems like 10,000 is, and 9,000 even is a huge number.
We don't even know what-
Yeah, I don't know for sure. I haven't done that, yeah.
What the expenses were, but-
But I'm just, you know, a check for 2,500 is going to backfill any cash right now, too. Just an idea, and I don't know the true cost. I'm just-
I, I, I would like to, you know, I, I would like to know what their actual expenses were and then, you know, make a meaningful contribution towards that.
Well, $2,500 is meaningful.
Is it, because then, because I mean, I don't, you know, it's a tough situation. I don't want to shed too much light on it. I want to ask them for their financials, you know, I'm just thinking, I'd rather hear, moving on, because it's a terrible situation, obviously.
Yeah, I mean, it was in the newspaper, so, I mean, it's not like, it's not like, you know, people don't, you know, it's not like a spotlight hasn't been showing on it already. And, you know, I would like to make a, again, you know, a meaningful contribution towards covering those costs. And I'm happy to, if, you know, if my fellow commissioners want me to do the homework and, and, you know, contact the, Mr. Thomas and, you know, ask him about some of that information, I can do that before we make-
And that'd be fine, you know, with, with what's already been said, you know, because maybe something, I don't know what meaningful is, so, yeah, go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we can just, I don't think we know what meaningful is until we have a sense of what their expenses were. Okay.
Thanks for following up on that.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? All right. So, see you again soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Dan. So now it says lunch recess on our schedule?
No, we have-
It does say lunch recess on the schedule.
But after items 10 and 11.
Okay, so any other items?
You have a 10 and 11 on-
Oh, I know, I know.
Is there a version of the-
No, and then they're on the next page. Yes, I just, I'm going, I'm reading the same.
Are they on for noon specifically? Is that what you're referring to?
There is no time for them on the schedule.
There's a different version of the schedule that you may be looking at.
There was, they produced a different, a different version of the agenda, like later in the week.
Yeah.
It's in our boxes.
That's what, that's why there's-
With, with an item-
Yeah, it took me a moment to figure that out, but I got it.
No, it's on the next page. It just, this, they didn't correct this page.
If you can look at this one, it's different than what you're looking at.
Yes, well, it's on page two, so, it's, I mean, it's basically-
But this one shows 10 and 11 before lunch.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so now we need to go on executive then?
No, those are open.
Oh, they're open. Oh, and we have Kathleen here.
It's not scheduled till noon, so do we-
Oh, they're open at noon? Okay, so.
Are you expecting the chair or anyone from his team? Otherwise, there's no mandate that you have to do it at noon. It's not a public hearing.
Okay.
Chair, they've notified me that they're watching, they're available. If you have questions, I'm coordinating with Captain Garrison, but they are otherwise not going to either be here in person or otherwise available. But if you have questions, they certainly will make themselves available.
Okay. Thank you, Kathleen.
Oh, yes. Commissioners, for the record, Kathleen Hinman, HR Director. So we have, let's see, we have two items. We'll talk about the first. And I am here to bring to you the Sheriff's Association and Sheriff's Office Collective Bargaining Agreement for DCSEA. And this would be for years 2022 to 2025. I believe that you've been presented in the past with a letter from the sheriff supporting the, the board's approval of this contract. And so we are looking for consideration of board signature of 2022-219 of the Collective Bargaining Agreement between Deschutes County and Deschutes County Sheriff's, and Deschutes County Sheriff and Deschutes County Sheriff's Employee Association. There's a lot of Deschutes County sheriffs in that, sorry. And I, I think that we have gone over and looked at kind of the, the summary of some of the changes. There has been a lot of communication regarding both the Sheriff's Office as well as the, the Sheriff's Office Management Team, as well as the association, to come up with the, the CBA that they're presenting to you for your consideration. We can go through those. I think that we've done that kind of in detail before. Otherwise, we can move forward with consideration. I'll leave it to the board for direction.
Well, yeah, I'll just acknowledge, I mean, this is the three-year collective bargaining agreement. It has been discussed in executive session. That's why, you know, we've, we've reviewed this in partnership with the management staff, the Sheriff's Office. There's some items in here that, you know, offer the employees' opportunities and stability for the next couple of years, so, you know, if we can start talking about specifics here, I'm just showing support for it.
I'd like to say that I think this draft contract demonstrates respect for the work of the DCSEA and contains provisions that are very important for employee recruitment and retention. I support all of the measures in this contract, but I would like to pull for separate consideration the 2% one-time award in addition to COLA to be folded into a more blanket policy, which is, which addresses more of the departments of the county that are struggling with workforce shortages. You know, some of the departments I'm particularly concerned about are the Community Development Department that had, that has had 13% vacancies to date this fiscal year. The Health Services Department has had 14% vacancies to date this fiscal year. 911 is, was, is not included in our, you know, position control summary that we see in our, on our, in our annual and our, in our monthly updates from Greg, but I know that, you know, from that Ben Bullidin article just a few weeks ago, that they had seven vacant positions on a staff of 42, which is pretty substantial. The Sheriff's Office on that, in that report had about a 9.11% vacancy rate and there were a number of other departments that had comparable or higher vacancy rates, adult parole and probation, facilities, finance, fair and expo, admin, and others. So we are in a, we are in a situation right now where the county should be very concerned about employee recruitment and retention. And I believe that this 2% increase in addition to COLA would be a great- great, would provide great benefits in terms of helping us move forward and make progress on ensuring that the county workforce is adequately staffed to provide the critical services that people rely on from us. And I can make, I can make that a motion if, if my fellow commissioners are interested in hearing that.
No, I actually, Kathleen, aren't we giving signing bonuses somehow to the Health Department in certain areas?
So, there, there was a period of time in which, because of some legislative changes, we were able to offer hiring bonuses as well.
And that just got reinitiated, yes, in the legislature.
It will be something that we look at. I will say with that, that we continue to see people leave. We are collecting those bonuses back, so I'm, I'm hesitant to say that they were as effective as everyone hoped they would be. It's, it's not the magic tool, but I think it's a tool. So, we do have a return rate of those bonuses on folks. So, but it will be a tool that we will continue to evaluate its, its efficiency and use going forward, now that we are able to again.
And weren't they like $5,000 or something?
It was, mhm.
$5,000. What about 911? Didn't we do something comparable?
We did, we did. We did a $5,000 retention bonus for existing staff and then a signing and retention bonus for new staff. We did not see an increase in applications after we posted with that. We did not see a, I would say, a significant increase in applications after posting with that information.
I mean, you know, the optics of that, in my mind, are that when someone's scanning through hundreds and hundreds of position announcements, you look at a top-line number for a salary, and you may or may not bother to read into the fine details that there's a signing, a potential signing bonus. And I'd also like to ask about whether, you know, Commissioner Dare mentioned the, the bonuses that were available in Health Services. I'd like to ask what percentage of the Health Services positions were eligible for those signing bonuses?
I don't know off the top of my head the percentage, but it was specific to the crisis program. So, our MCAT team, as well as the stabilization center, so it was positions only in those two areas, which are collectively the crisis program.
Right, so Health Services, which is 300, 400 employees, you know, very small number of Health Services employees eligible for those signing bonuses.
Well, you know, thanks, Commissioner Chang, for explaining what you're thinking there. I'm not supportive of that. This is a collective bargaining agreement for, you know, these services and this group of folks. We are known as a great employer, you know, public-benefited positions represented in, in some areas and not in others, referring to these agreements. But, you know, I can't imagine that, well, I don't want to take that, that lead in pay in this environment. Right now, with world turmoil, economic turmoil, small business turmoil, I'm not in a spot where I want to say, okay, let's take the lead in pay, because that's going to disturb the market a little bit, too. And I do say that as a experienced small business owner, you know, multiple careers in my path, past, you know, we are going to negotiate, be fair, equitable, and treat people right here at Deschutes County. So, this is one step, one little package, and you're asking to, you know, spread 2% everywhere at this time. It'll come around. Each group that's going to, you know, negotiate for the next agreements and management decisions that we make for the whole organization will, will, you know, scale with the economy.
I would disagree on a number of points. Number one, what we're talking about here is actually, you know, with this specific contract, is making the Deschutes County Sheriff's Employees Association the lead in pay among its peers in, you know, county sheriff's offices. Not the, maybe not the top top, but, I mean, we heard a description of comps for other counties. So, if you don't support the idea of being, of becoming the lead in pay, then I would say you, you should be advocating to take that out of the contract that we're considering. That's number one. Number two, we do, you know, I believe we have, we offer a good, a good package to employees. Is it working? I think that, you know, having all of these county departments with 10% or higher vacancy rates shows that we need to do more. We need to do something. This is, this is, you know, 2% is not a silver bullet. It's not the only thing, but it is a thing that, that we could consider doing in a targeted way. You know, just like the Sheriff's Employees Association isn't proposing the 2% for every single position at the Sheriff's Office, they're, they're targeting at, at position categories that they're very concerned about recruitment and retention for. So, so I, you know, disagree on both of those fronts. I think we need to consider that we are, we are in an employment environment right now where we have a whole bunch of county staff who have been wonderful, loyal employees, but are reaching retirement age. You know, we're seeing that across the nation, that baby boomers are rotating out and leaving a vacuum, and that there is tremendous competition for that next generation of workers. And if we are not, you know, if we are, if we are not competing, we're, you know, competitive for those workers, we will, we will be in a position where the county cannot provide adequate services at an adequate level for, for, you know, our residents. And that is a really substantial concern when you're talking about public safety functions, when you're talking about health functions, when you're talking about, you know, trying to keep up with growth in our Community Development Department. You know, we just heard this morning about the massive amount of applications that are coming in. Our community needs more housing. And if, if we become a bottleneck for that, that is a real concern.
And this is a good conversation, and I appreciate having it. I was just thinking back, I have never, I've only taken one career for a pay advance, and even the amount wasn't, the, the specific salary wasn't why I was going to take that position. So, I'm just thinking back in my career, you know, I mean, it's really, if you, if you, if you get grounded in what you want to do, where you want to be, and why you want to do it, salary is not the driving factor. And yes, everything is costing more right now, but I want to hire employees that are following their dreams and providing, you know, customer service and, and community service in these public jobs. So, I'm just saying, it's a different, different view.
And, and I don't want someone to come work here whose first priority is salary. But there are people whose values and professional goals might align with the county and with county work, who might be inhibited from, from applying because the salary is not livable. And that is a really different situation than being motivated by the dollar amount. You know, nobody's going to come here who is motivated only by the dollar amount of, of the salary. But salary can be an inhibiting factor, especially in a place like this where housing costs are insane.
Kathleen, what is the average salary of Deschutes County? I do believe, including our benefits, it's, it's up there?
I don't have that detail.
You can't pull it up?
I can probably work to pull it up and see if we have that.
Okay, because I know, a couple of years ago, it was at a point, now, I, I do remember working in the recession of the 70s when there were gas lines, and I, you know, my company was having a really hard time. I actually got to train two people when I left. And they were going to pay two people, but they were only paying me. But that was during a recession, and, you know, truly, we have a different work responsibility. It's just like the woman I just met, she's working two jobs. And, you know, I feel like the 2% here is, they've asked for it, it's only for one year, it's only for a certain group, and, you know what, and they said it can be covered in their levy. But to blanket it, I feel like that's, that's, that's just too general. I think, you know, it's Sarah, and we think out of the box when, you know, we have different negotiations. I think that's important. So, I'm not for, like, across the board. Now, a couple of years ago, when we didn't know where we were going to go with COVID, it was interesting how we all just kind of stepped back. I remember CDD didn't have a couple of people that they filled at that time, because we didn't really know how busy we were going to be. And, and so now we see that we're still really busy. And I, I feel like we're approaching it on a very logical basis, and, you know, like, just like today, when they asked for that additional assistant, I, I thought that was appropriate. I don't want to burn out our teams, but I truly feel like we, we need to leave this here, and, you know, I'm sure they'll be negotiating when their contracts come up.
Well, yeah, so, with this discussion, as I say, I'm supportive. I'll move board signature of document 2022-219, the Collective Bargaining Agreement between Deschutes County and Deschutes County Sheriff and Deschutes County Sheriff's Employee Association.
And, Commissioner Chang, you're not going to second it?
I, I will not second that, that motion.
Okay, I'll second it, but I will second it with the fact that I was not, I did not support going down to 25 years. I can understand why, when you're walking around with all that, all the weight on, it's got to really be hard on your body. But, you know, I, that wasn't truly what I wanted to support initially. So, just wanted to make that public comment. Anything else you'd like to say, Commissioner DeBon?
Nope.
Well, for discussion purposes, I will just reiterate again that I am supportive of all of the provisions in this, in this contract. I just would like to see the, the 2% on top of COLA pulled into a more blanket policy that covered more departments of the county. And because I don't believe that moving this forward is on a, on a one-off basis, when we just played hardball, super hardball with, with AFSMI, literally on a, on a contract that was completed three months ago, I, I do not think that this is fair, and I, I don't think it is good policy. So, that's, that's, when I vote, no, I just, so everyone understands, I, I support all the provisions of the contract. I just would like to see a key benefit that we're seeing here extended to more of the county's departments.
So, one other item that comes to mind is that, you know, this is a public safety tax rate that we're talking about here. We are the Board of Commissioners with this authority, but, you know, the, the vote of the people in 2006 authorized, you know, rural patrol rate and countywide rate for sheriff's operations. So, it's, it's a great opportunity. In fact, you know, around the state, people have asked, how did that happen, and what do you guys do in there? But it was a vote of the people that put us in this spot to be able to fund this, you know, with the leadership of the sheriff's off, you know, sheriff's negotiating team now and our partnership getting to this point. You know, we, we do have the resources to do this.
Well, and, and in our, in the last budget, budget cycle, we did just see Rural District Number Two fall short. You know, it's operating at a deficit, and as a result, we saw the Sheriff's Office ask for additional transient room tax revenues, I believe, in the range of $300,000 to kind of shore things up, so that we did not have to look at raising the, raising the rural tax, Rural District Two rate back towards the 6 cent higher rate that it had just been two years ago, when it was still in the black.
Nick.
Thank you, Chair Dare. I just want, just for clarity, before you vote, just so that I understand correctly, the 2% is actually an item number 11 in the memorandum of understanding, if I recall correctly. Is that just as opposed to this item number 10, which is in the Collective Bargaining Agreement? I just, just, I just want to make sure you're voting on and commenting on the, because it is a.
It can be talked about either way.
2% is included in the Collective Bargaining Agreement.
It is in the agreement. Okay, I saw the MOU as well. So, the MOU is separate. Okay, just to be clear. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, I just.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I always appreciate that. Any other comments? Commissioner DeBon?
Voting yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
Okay, on the chair, both yes. And I do want to make a comment. I am actually happy that Deschutes County now has vehicles that deputies can drive home with, and they're parked in their neighborhood, and then they're back out on the road. I think that message to our community is that they're working for us, and they're, and they're out there. So, I know it was, it was a rather large purchase, but I think it was important in today's world. So, thank you. So now we have the MOU.
Correct. So, next for your consideration is board signature of 2022-220, memorandum of understanding between the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office and the Deschutes County Sheriff's Employee Association. And this would be to allow for the county to align the time collection and pay period. So, this is a sort of an administrative process that we've been working on for some time, to move forward with that. And so, this would allow the county to embark on this project in fiscal year '23 with specific notification to Sheriff's Employees Association. Any additional questions or comments that I can help clarify on that one?
On this one, I would just say, I appreciate the Sheriff's Office and the Sheriff's Employees Association working with us to align these, these payroll processes, so that the county can operate more efficiently.
Yes, I believe this was an issue when I first became a commissioner in 2019, and I'm, I'm glad to know that we have resolved it, hopefully, soon.
Working towards that.
Yes, working towards resolving it. It's taken a couple of years, but that's okay.
Setting the path for resolving it. But, yeah, the, the partnership here, you know, this is one of those situations where we're going to change the, the time card requirements and then, and then when you get paid. So, there's this little window there that is going to really possibly disrupt some people's lives. And usually, you wouldn't even work at a place for a whole career and not have this situation happen. So, it's just documenting it, notifying everybody that at some point, we're going to pull the trigger on a little bit of a payroll timing change, but we, let's do it together.
Is there a motion?
I move approval of document 2022-220, memorandum of understanding between the Deschutes County Sheriff's Office and the Deschutes County Sheriff's Employees Association.
And I'll second it.
Any religious question? Commissioner DeBon, or Mr. Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Okay, on the chair, both yes.
And Chair Dare, the, we're having a little difficulty working in munis right now, and so, we'll get the average wage information to you at a date, but my team is working on that.
Oh, fabulous. And will that, and will it be benefits on top of it, then?
We can put together that calculation as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I apologize for seeking that clarity. It was exhibit A, and I couldn't, I just didn't need to make sure it was exhibit A to the, to the CBA, to the Collective Bargaining Agreement, as opposed to the MOU, because I knew, or in the, I knew it wasn't included within the agreement, but it was exhibit A. So, yeah, thank you.
That's okay. I was, I have a, my agenda's a little sketchy at this moment, so, thank you very much, Nick. Any other items? So, are we then coming back? Are we going to stay now and keep working through lunch?
I'd say we'll take a break.
Like a break till 1?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to adjourn until 1 PM then.
Okay.
We will reconvene our Board of County Commissioners meeting. I do believe we have a couple items before we go into executive.
Yes, thank you Chair Adair. The first request is, and Commissioner Chang raised this, I have this from the Association of Oregon Counties Federal Land Management Subcommittee, which is a Subcommittee of the National Resources Steering Committee. They are meeting on March 31st. And per the Subcommittee bylaws, it appears they're looking for a member from each Board of County Commissioners. And so, and then it requires a, each member county holds one position on the Board of Directors and has one vote. The member county must appoint one of its governing body members to vote on its behalf. So, the county makes the appointment of this voting member by letter signed by a majority of the governing body and delivered to Subcommittee staff when it pays dues to the Subcommittee. So, the question is, in mid, perhaps Commissioner Chang would like to serve on the Subcommittee? Or it's just a question for the Board, would you like to appoint a member to serve on this Subcommittee?
Okay, did you want to serve him?
I would be interested, but I actually wasn't even aware, you know, up until a few weeks ago, I wasn't, or when we got our invoice, I wasn't even aware that such a Subcommittee existed. And I was curious whether we have been participating or not.
We had in the past when we were all getting together, I remember a couple of years ago, they used to have like a 7:30 a.m. breakfast, and I would go to those. I know we had it at the AOC conference in, let's see, when did, 2019? I know I was at the one in 19. So, yes, we have participated. And hopefully, you know, I don't remember them, I don't remember when last year.
We don't, but we don't have a member currently?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah, I think it's something we've been involved in. I haven't been involved in it in a while. It's a meeting that even if one of us was like the voting member, you know, during AOC meetings, more than one of us might be in the room if there's some interesting topic, you know, so representing Deschutes County at an AOC meeting. And it's really, it's kind of, you know, SRS or Forest Management Issues, federal lobbying possibly. So, it's, it's come and gone, you know, through cycles. Because O and C lands and the, you know, Forest Trust lands, that's a state issue. But I mean, there's different forest, public lands issues around the state. So, we'd fit in with a subset of them.
But this is specifically a federal land Subcommittee?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be interested in participating.
Okay, wonderful.
I don't really want to have hour, hours and hours of discussion about coordination. Assuming, assuming, oh, I've spent plenty of time explaining to people why it's not the only, the only way to interact with federal agencies already, but.
Okay.
Sounds like it's a chair appointment.
It says the county appoints, it doesn't say how, so.
Okay.
Without resistance, so we're fine.
Excellent, okay.
Okay, we're good.
That's the first item. The second item I have is that we have received applications to serve on our Solid Waste Advisory Committee. And our Solid Waste Director Chad is asking if a Commissioner would like to serve on the committee to review those applications and to interview members. And I, one hand just went up from Commissioner Devone. And I know Chad would certainly like a Commissioner to serve on that, and it'll ultimately be a board appointment.
Great. Thank you.
So.
Yeah, so I'd offer to do that.
Fine, yeah, I, I still owe Chad some reviews of the landfill methane gas proposals. So, I don't, I don't necessarily want to sign up for another.
Well, and I want to be routed on those too. I want to see them. I don't need to be in a voting selection committee. But I definitely want to see those too, now that you brought that up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, on the topic of solid waste, so Commissioner Albertson out of Lake County, you know, mentioned that they're possibly looking at the opportunity of citing a landfill in their county and wanted to talk to me or us, Deschutes County. So, he had offered to get a couple Commissioners together, so Lake, Klamath, Deschutes, and Jefferson County. So then, yeah, I'm going to be talking to these gentlemen about this topic. But the message from my point of view is, hey, we're rolling, we're rolling down a citing process. So, just letting you know.
Are they, do they want to talk with us because they think that Deschutes County residents are going to want to go to their landfill instead of ours?
Well, as I say, I'm, I'm going to be meeting with them in the near future, telling them that we're planning on ours. I think the idea is if it's regional, then, you know, they want our waste. But as I say, we're not in a spot to do that at this time.
I mean, yeah, and it seems like there, I, there was specific, you know, public feedback, you know, opposing the idea of sending our waste somewhere else, so.
The carbon footprint of hauling is, was the common ground. Let's not send the trucks, many trucks a day up and down some highway was, yeah, the general idea.
Might suggest there'd be a tremendous amount of risk too, associated with a new landfill site. It's going to take every bit of pull and muscle we have to get it through.
Oh, yeah, I'm just sharing.
We've got far more resources in Lake County, so there hasn't been a new landfill cited in over two decades in Oregon. And so, this will be a heck of a push to get ours cited.
Well, that's why I've been asking people, please respect the process. Let's work together here.
I say that because I've been putting out this alarm for years now. We need to get moving on this. I mean, I'm figuring on five years of federal litigation. So, we need to get moving.
We're, we're behind COVID definitely.
So, if we need to use it in nine years, which has been mentioned, we need to be done, from our point of view, like now, so we can let it bounce up and down the system possibly. Good point.
Do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. I do want to give you the little details of Connect Oregon. Everything that's going to go on to the next level for the possible funding actually has a great relationship with Deschutes County. The Bandar Airport was on the top of, top of the list with, oh, except for the one project, which was a small project from Lake County, which was their number one from their region. But then the Gilchrist Train Track Improvement is amazing. You know, a lot of people that live in Deschutes County work down there, and it, it's, they moved it up to number three because the scoring wasn't as good as the Madras. So, hopefully, it can push through all four.
Tell me about the rail thing for Gilchrist.
Yeah.
There's a Gilchrist Mill spur line, is my understanding. What are they planning on doing?
Improving it so it can actually take more weight, I believe. Let's see, how many truckloads?
For the mill operations.
Right, yeah. Huge, huge capacity increase, like actually some weight. And anyhow, their scoring wasn't as high, but it's truly important to the community. So, we'll see if we can get those four through.
And then, you know, Crescent has a sewer system that was, you know, funded and is being built. And then, you know, Crescent has a sewer system that was, you know, funded and is being built out, so there's going to be housing opportunities down there also, and they're
Oh, good.
walking distance from Crescent to Gilcrest. So, yeah, it could be interesting, especially if they keep the mill going and have small and medium sized log processing. They could be doing that for a long time.
Yes. Nice, instead of burning it, we're actually using it.
Well, merchantable timber, yeah.
Yeah.
They weren't burning sawlogs anyway.
I'm talking about fires.
Oh, yeah. Good point, good point.
Like, do what we were supposed to do with it, yes. Okay, so do we need to go into executive?
I got one more, or maybe two little things. So, yeah, last night, Deschutes County Historical Society, so this is kind of a separate organization that we host over there at the Reed School. We had our board meeting in person last night, first time in two years, so a great group of people. We're talking about, you know, an Antiques Fair in August this year, so it's just like when we've talked about culture, you know, the music and arts and culture scene. This is another part of, you know, kind of rounds out our community, thinking of the history. One of the items that they were talking about last night is a choir and a wool blanket from the inn over here from back in the day. Whatever the name of the inn was here, sorry, I can't even think of it there. But, you know, just some of the good history that's on display in the archives, a lot of scanning going on, so just something that's, you know, kind of warms your heart to think about remembering our history.
Oh, yes, of course.
And I did the radio, KBND radio for 10 minutes this morning too. Just kind of talked about our agenda a little bit today, and the House Bill 40123, and how we're going to start bringing that together.
Okay, all right. So, executive now?